We're good.
We're good. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Weathersfield Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, March 20th. And Councilman Hill, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Sue, would you do us the honor of the attendance tonight?
Councilor Carbone. Councilor Clancy.
Here.
Councilor Forrest.
Here.
Councilor Hill.
Here.
Councilor Lesser.
Here.
Councilor O'Connor. Councilor Pentalo.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Mazarella.
Here.
Mayor Rell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Let me see. Are we going to bring the projector down or the screen down? Do we need that? Or...
Who's going first?
Got it?
Charlie.
Charlie. If you don't mind. Charles Brown from the Connecticut, Central Connecticut Health District. I would start by saying maybe a little bit less busy than the last two times you've come before this council, thank goodness, but...
Well, this is, it's the first time that I'm live in front of this council in about three years. So, that talks a lot about how busy we have been.
Yep.
But with public health, you usually swap one virus out for another. So, you know, we stay busy either way, Mayor, as you know.
I do. And I think we all have the presentation...
Actually, the presentation that's in there is a different presentation than one that we normally give to the EOC every other week. I said, "We'll forward this presentation to you tomorrow morning."
We're not Berlin.
Like I said.
Just joking.
Oh, y'all keep me on my toes. Well, thank you, everyone, for having us here. My name is Charles Brown, and I'm with the Director of Health for the Central Connecticut Health District. Barbara Gilbert from Rocky Hill is our chairperson, and we're lucky today to have three of our board representatives here from Weathersfield to represent us. Anne Marie DiLoreto, Deborah Hennault, and Diane Duke. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your service.
They represent the town of Weathersfield very well on our, on our board. So, some general, general information about the Health District. We serve the towns of Berlin, Newington, Rocky Hill, and Weathersfield for a combined population of about 97,000 people. We were founded in 1996, so have had better than 25 years providing a broad range of public health services that we'll go over for all of our member towns. CCHD is one of 20 regional health departments in this, in the state. So, we're right there in the middle, number three. Everybody always looks at the map for where they are. So, we're right there. General information about us. We have our central office in Rocky Hill on the Silvestine Highway there at the St. Francis Building on the left-hand side. We have 14 full-time employees, and this includes three COVID-19 grant-funded positions that we picked up since we were here. Have over 50 active professional lay volunteers, and we have oversight from a 14-member Board of Health. And, you know, the board members are done by population, so Newington, being our biggest town, has four members, and the other towns all have three representatives. So, this is a picture of our basic organization for our staff. You see the administration section in yellow. Green is our environmental. Blue is our community health division, and we have a new division since the last time we were here, the clinical services, Clinical Health Services Division, that we stood up under COVID to do COVID testing and vaccination. So, let's start with the bottom line. So, we just had our audit completed. So, revenues for '21 and '22, you know, was mostly, you know, a little split up between the town contributions at $7 per person. We get paid $7 per person per year by each one of our towns to do, provide public health services. We had program revenue in about $268,000. That program revenue is generally the fees that we charge for licenses and flu clinics and things of that nature. And then grants from the federal, state, and other, for about $565,000, and a little bit of interest income. The good news about this is we're fairly well-balanced. So, if we lose a little on one side, we're, it doesn't topple over the stool. Our expenditures, as you can see, we spend most of our money on our staff. We don't make widgets. We have a professional staff that provides a variety of public health services, and that's where the majority of our expenses go. A little bit unprofessional and contractual. Our operating expenses at about $175,000, and other expenses about $6. So, just to talk a little bit about healthcare and public health, they're similar but different, and people have a good understanding about healthcare generally. Healthcare's primary focus is the individual. Where in public health, we really look at the population as a whole, as our, as our patient. Interventions in healthcare include diagnosis and treatment. For public health, we look at assessment, policy development, and assurance that those policies are followed. The process of healthcare really looks at the management of patient care. Where in public health, we look at systems management, so looking at the environment and human behavior as, as the inputs that we can control. The outcome for healthcare to the individual is to return that individual to health, where public health really looks to sustain healthy communities throughout the whole. So, what is the purpose of a public health agency? So, we'd like to think about the three Ps a lot: prevent, promote, and protect. And God, I wish we could go to the pharmacy and ask for an ounce of prevention. It would make my job a lot easier. So, start with the elephant in the room. So, COVID-19, as of St. Patrick's Day, number of cases that we had was 7,142 here in Weathersfield. Unfortunately, we have seen 66 deaths in the town contributed to, attributed to COVID-19, and we had over 117,000 tests as of last Friday. As you can see in the graph, you know, the numbers are generally moving in the right direction. The trend has been downward. Currently, in Hartford County and all across the state of Connecticut, according to CDC's transmission levels, we're in the green. We're in low transmission, which is exactly where we want to be. We still do a lot of activities with respect to COVID-19. We're still doing vaccination primarily of vulnerable populations. This includes adults with functional needs in the homebound. We do daily tracking of cases for each one of our member towns. We follow up that with case investigation and health education. So, we actually have folks that call for every case that's positive, and they meet every day to pick up cases and to make sure that people understand what they need to do if they're positive: how to quarantine, how to isolate. We still provide technical support to schools, daycares, and a variety of other facilities. We're the subject matter experts for the press, regulated facilities, and for any of the residents that have questions. Lord knows, I've been in the news enough for, for most of my career. We provide regional support to other local health departments working with the capital region, and we've distributed a lot of tests to medical providers, long-term care facilities, and to the public. We have free tests outside of our office, so if anybody needs a test or a mask, you can come down to our office and pick them up. So, one of the primary things that we do is to prevent the epidemics and spread of disease. Influenza's been, was the big one other than COVID, and last year, we did over 1,200 flu shots. And the average time flu shot is about three minutes. So, we've got it down pretty good. You walk in with your appointment, and you have paperwork filled out from door to door. You're getting your shot, and you're on your way. Other disease follow-up we do is hepatitis A, B, and C, foodborne diseases like salmonella. We follow up a lot on lead poisoning in kids, and that's, that's something that's going to increase because the level that is actionable actually went down. So, we're going to see a lot more follow-up for lead in kids than we used to. Other vaccine-preventable diseases like measles and waterborne diseases like Legionella. So, you can see on this graph that, you know, even though we've seen COVID and influenza go down, you start to see a slight uptick there at the, at the end of it. And there's a story to that. We're reaching kind of the end of our immunity from vaccinations and from the boosters. So, we think that we're going to start to see a little bit more cases as we come into the next few months, just because of waning immunity. So, I urge everyone, just make sure that you're doing the right thing. You know, keep your distance. If you're sick, stay home. Wash your hands, cover your cough, you know, and wear that mask. Other epidemics and disease that we see a lot, and especially around this time of year, is mosquito and tick-borne diseases. So, eastern equine encephalitis, West Nile virus. We get a few cases of Zika every now and then, though that's kind of diminished quite a bit. Lyme disease is big, or leishiosis and babesiosis. Now, this is an interesting slide, and I'll tell you right now, the funding that we got from COVID-19 provided us with a position that I am enjoying very much, having an epidemiologist, so a disease detective. Her job is to focus on the numbers. And she looked at the tick-borne diseases and kind of crossed that with the monthly average temperature. So, this is over about six years. And one thing that we notice is that you see the dark blue line? That's the average monthly temperature. So, on the times when that line is a little higher than normal, the following summer, you actually see more Lyme disease, more leishiosis, and here recently, you start to see babesiosis. So, the, both the numbers and the types of diseases are changing because we get a little warmer in the winter time, and those ticks are actually surviving. So, we urge everybody to be very careful as we're getting active in the springtime because we see that rise in disease, and we know we've had a nice, warm winter. The ticks know that, too. So, one thing that we're able to do, knowing that, is to reach out and do some sessions on education. And we have an upcoming session here on April 27th about ticks and tick-borne diseases in the Connecticut River Valley. So, if you're interested in that, it's actually going to be at Dinosaur State Park. You can go to our website and register to be part of it. We have about 80 slots, so everybody, make sure you register. Other things that we do aside from diseases are our response to the opioid crisis. So, we've been the convener of the local response agency in our towns, working with social services. We currently have work groups addressing prevention, response, and recovery. And we've just been awarded a grant renewal from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services to work with people that are suffering from addiction and their families, to get them on the pathway to recovery. Our environmental folks are out there every single day. As you can see, they did close to 1,000 food service inspections last year alone, in addition to 39 septic pool inspections, motels, and salons. So, they're, they're out there every day, assuring that the places that a public goes are safe and healthy to attend. Other things that our environmental health are involved in is complaints. We receive complaints mostly associated with housing and property maintenance issues like hoarding, you know, and property maintenance. But other complaints that we deal with are food-related. We get into the rodents and insects that are involved, garbage refuse, air-water pollution, and some complaints within the motels like bedbugs. In addition to that, we actually have our Putting on Airs program. This is an asthma home intervention where we have a team of environmental specialists and asthma health educators that actually go in the home of children that have uncontrolled asthma, and they look for triggers and do education with the family so that they understand how to manage their asthma. This has been a great program and very successful, and we've had, you know, really enjoyed the fact that we can provide that to our towns. In addition to that, radon kit distribution, and as I mentioned, the lead poisoning prevention is something that we're definitely going to be doing more of. One of my favorite things. So, the walking competition. So, as we promote and encourage healthy behaviors, do y'all know about the four-town walking competition? I know the town council does. Last year, Rocky Hill took everything. Okay? So, they took the high stepper trophy. They took the impact award for highest participation. And let me tell you, I want Weathersfield to step up. Literally, step up. Okay? This is something that we're proud of. Last year, we had close to 400. Prior to COVID, we had 600 people within the four towns walking. I would love to see that many people, once again, be active within our communities. It makes a huge difference. Other things we do are on emergency preparedness. So, we respond to disasters, and we assist the communities to recovery from, recover from them. We do emergency preparedness planning. We have a full-time preparedness coordinator. And every year that we do our flu clinics, we actually use those as drills for medical countermeasure dispensing. They test our plans every year. We use it to train our nurses on how we would actually do this in an emergency, and it paid off well during COVID because we were able to do drive-through clinics because we'd done that before. So, all of the things, the times that we do our planning, we test our plans every year. As we prepare for the future, we really look at those administrative and health policies. I've been talking for many years about the FDA food code being adopted. Well, February 16th, it actually happened. So, here in Connecticut, the FDA Model Food Code is what we can now enforce, which is a change in the paradigm for how inspections get done. So, instead of looking at the halls and the walls, there's a lot more emphasis on the risk, the risky behaviors that are there. So, how do they handle the food? How do they prepare it? So, our inspectors are going to spend a lot more time watching people in our food service establishments and how they prepare the food that we all eat. In addition to that, we changed our sanitary code here last year to update it to some of the new technical standards, and we're currently, I would like to thank everybody that participated in our community health assessment. We had a community perception survey that a lot of folks participated in, and we're just getting ready to start community conversations. We have our first one coming up here during Public Health Week on April 3rd around obesity and overweight. So, I want to say last two words, thank you. Thank you for letting the Health District serve the town of Weathersfield. Thank you for all the support that we get from the towns, and I stand ready to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Councilwoman Clancy.
I would love to hear more about the Demus grant. What are you going to be doing, and who's eligible for it?
So, we actually received the grant itself. So, we've gotten this grant, is, I think we're on our fifth year, Deb. So, we've gotten a grant from Demus to provide recovery coach services, and we're doing it in all four towns that we have. Primarily, though, as we're looking at the number of overdoses that we see, if you look on a map, the Silvestine Highway and the Berlin Turnpike light up where overdoses occur. So, our recovery coach is out there probably right now, you know, looking for people that, you know, might be suffering from addiction and trying to get them the resources to be able to get on the path to recovery. So, you know, finding out if they need assistance in any way. So, we get that grant, this, like I said, we just had the renewal for another two years, I believe, Deb? And, you know, we'll continue to provide those services as we move forward.
Do you have access to unpaid beds?
No. What we do is we make referrals. So, you know, our recovery coach knows a lot about the resources, how to access them and assist those that are in, you know, that are dealing with substance abuse issues to be able to access the resources. They're kind of the liaison between, you know, the individual and the resources they need to access.
Just to follow up on that, do you work with our own Department of Social and Youth Services and coordinate a lot of that together?
Absolutely. And all four of our social services within our towns are part of our opioid coalition. We meet monthly, have active work groups to talk about how we can coordinate services between all of the towns and assure that everybody's, you know, has the appropriate resources that they need.
Great. Councilman Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. One of your first slides, I'm just going to sort of hit a couple right in a row here. One of your first slides was talking about the COVID booster and maybe some waning resistance?
Waning immunity.
Yep. What is the guidance on getting a second booster, a third booster, a fourth booster? Is that something you just couldn't, kind of get every two years?
Right now, they're still, they're still actually working on that. So, you know, we know that you're, to have the main series of shots, and now they require, if you just didn't get vaccinated at all, they require the bivalent booster, which has the original strain, and then the new Omicron version. What we're anticipating is they're going to be more of a seasonal approach, similar to what we see in flu. So, we're probably going to see a new booster out coming up here this fall, addressing the new variants that we see. You know, we're approaching where we're out of the pandemic or coming out of the pandemic emergency, and COVID-19 is going to be an endemic disease, just like flu, you know, similar to the coronaviruses that we see that cause the common cold. But the advantage that we have is that we actually have a vaccine that's developed against this, and it's shown that if we actually utilize it, it does decrease severe cases of COVID, keeps people out of the hospital, and keeps people out of the morgue, which is exactly what we want to do.
So, is the, is this newer booster, is this kind of like an mRNA sort of...
It would be...
Architecture versus the, because the other shot's not that?
Yeah, it would be, it would be based on similar technology that they used to develop it, is what we're assuming.
Okay. You could, obviously, I'm sure you will, but let the town manager know, so when that happens...
Oh, yeah. Well, trust me, when, when, when the boosters come out, there's going to be a lot of press on that.
Any discussion, we'll go to the next one. Any discussion about expanding our Health District? We sort of talk about this every year. Cromwell seems to be the odd one out, if you sort of look at the map easily, but even beyond that, to continue to have efficiencies within the Health District, whether it's Middlefield or Cromwell or Glastonbury, you know, those towns that sort of touch, but, you know, really could use expansion.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're open to any discussion along those lines. We've reached out to Cromwell in the past, and they're pretty much going to go it on their own for a while. You know, we're still open to conversations with any town that wants to join the district, and as long as it's advantageous on both, advantageous on both sides, then we can make, you know, potentially make that happen.
Have you seen that throughout the state? There's Health Districts that are different groupings of towns or, you know, obviously...
Yeah, I mean, we, we see...
Do you see the consolidation now?
Well, we, we, since, since I've been here in the state of Connecticut, we've gone to over 100 health departments, down to 60.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's been a lot of consolidation. Currently, there's only, I believe, six part-time departments that are left, and those are usually the ones that either decide to go full-time and bring on a director and a full-time sanitarian, or more, more than, more often than not, they join, join a district. So, we don't, we have Cromwell that's currently, you know, part-time at that point. So, we are one of the ones that potentially they could reach out to when they make that decision to go. And we still have a good relationship with folks that are down there. So, you know, if the opportunity arises, we're definitely open to talking about it.
Related, town manager, that may be an opportunity for us to redo, get the same effective result, but maybe not be part of a large conglomerate and maybe reduce some costs on the way through. So, just something to think about as you continue to take a look, or maybe talk to the Cromwell town manager, the Glastonbury town manager, there's definitely potential there. Next, you talked about testing water. Was that both, if somebody has a potential issue within their house, or is that just sort of like water streams and courses, or both, or...
So, we do generally testing the water as far as that, that goes. I don't think I mentioned that, but I, but we do test water for things like Legionella if there's a case, issues with that. For the most part, water testing is individual, so if somebody owns a home, they have to pay for the water testing. The Health District doesn't provide that service. But in general, we, we do provide technical support, so if somebody's having an issue, we can provide that to them.
Good to know. And then how about on more like a public water course? You know, we saw like something, some weird color at Gulf Brook, you know, or in the Cove or something like that. Is that you guys, or is that somebody else?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do respond to those types of things. You know, as far as, you know, public water, swimming areas, things of that nature, during the summertime especially, we're the ones that go out there and assure that those areas are safe. So, we do water testing at, you know, any of the public pools or swimming areas along those lines.
And what, and even non, like, where public people bathe, like rivers and streams?
In general, that's DEEP. It, it doesn't fall to the Health District, though we would respond if there was an issue.
And you talked about a lot of the awesome work, great work that you do, food inspections and so on and so forth. Is there, is there a list of those Weathersfield establishments that have been inspected and their grade and passing and stuff like that?
We don't do grades. I mean, right now, currently, we're in transition. Any of the inspections that we have are available from our office through a Freedom of Information Act. Somebody just has to come down and ask, and we'll provide, you know, whatever that they're, they're looking for. We're a public agency, and we're transparent that way.
So, what is, if it's not grades, and I...
Yeah.
I'm not, you know, I don't know the whole system, obviously.
I know.
What is the rating system, or...
So, currently...
How would the public be able to unpack that?
So, we're currently transitioning from the old code that did have a number system involved to the FDA code that doesn't have that. So, really, what it is in the FDA code is more of a pass/fail, where in the past, they had numbers, but, for example, even though you scored a 96, if you had a four-point violation that was a critical one, the inspection was considered to be failed. So, there's nuances to the inspections. And anybody that's interested in this, we're more than happy to sit down and explain the situation, explain how the process of inspection goes, and really what critical violations really are. That's what our staff does.
Is it possible to provide the, the results of the Weathersfield establishments to the town manager?
Certainly. All we need is an FOI request, and we'll be able to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else for Charles? Just to follow up on a couple of the questions that Councilman Forrest had asked. This is one thing that's kind of boggled my mind over the last couple of months as we've seen the decrease in COVID rates. You know, personally, on my end, I'm looking at hospitalizations at first, you know, were we at that critical number of 1,000, and we had, you know, 1,200 beds available or something like that? Or 200 beds left available. But then we started to look at testing and then the positivity rate with the testing. Testing, you know, obviously, more tests, you know, you have a better sample of positivity, or more tests reported.
Right.
You have a better sample of positivity rate. I mean, right now, you can go into anybody's medicine chest in their, their bathroom and pull out a half a dozen kits, and kids get sick, test them, they're fine, send them on to school, work, wherever. That's not being reported.
You're correct.
So, where are we getting the 117,000 tests that have been reported?
So, that is the 117 tests that have actually been reported to the state that are conducted by laboratories within the state. So, currently, our surveillance system is a little blind, and, you know, we knew that they were going to get this, get to this point. So, with the number of at-home tests that get done, as you mentioned, they don't get reported to us. So, just the number of cases that we see, the positivity rate that we see, is the tip of the iceberg. So, we always assume that that's kind of the canary in the mineshaft. We start to see that rate go up, we're assuming that there's others that are out there that are positive that aren't getting reported to us. And as you mentioned, we actually, in CDC, made a shift to not just looking at positivity as the one metric to which we respond to. Looking at hospitalizations, the combination of transmission of disease, how many people are severe to go to the hospital, and other things like wastewater, you know, is there an amount of COVID in, in the wastewater that we see? Is it going up and down? So, it's a variety of indicators that we have to look at now versus what we did in the past.
That brings up another point, and we'd mentioned about testing of water. The MDC is our public water supply. Do you know if the MDC is being asked to partake in any? I know New Haven was doing it.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of the reports were from.
Yep, and we've actually reached out to the MDC. The Department of Public Health has a program. They're, they're trying to get all the wastewater folks to provide samples and, and do that. So, we made a connection between them and the Department of Public Health, and they're actually talking about providing that information for the Hartford area now. So, you know, I don't believe it's there yet, but we're working on it.
Great. And just two others. The, thank you for the, I think it's Heather, and I can't remember Heather's last name.
Otis.
Heather Otis. She's been working with town manager and myself on a, a problem that we have on the northern side of town on the Silvestine Highway with dumpsters. And I know you had mentioned some of the issues with dumpsters and trash and rodents and whatnot. Is there something the town can do to better enforce compliance with closing of dumpsters, less public-using private dumpsters, and even better routine pickups from the haulers to, to empty this out?
Yeah, I mean, anything that we can do to, to kind of spread the word about, you know, the dumpsters are generally private. So, a lot of the folks, especially, you know, public, they see that as an opportunity to get rid of, of, you know, volume of material sometimes if the dumpster's open. What we've been trying to do is to educate those people that have dumpsters that they need to secure them. So, we've sent them the appropriate letters. Some of them, we sent violation notices because they've left them open for a while, and eventually, if it gets to the point to where we can't do anything else, $500 fines per occurrence is a... per occurrence is a pretty good motivator.
And lastly, you had mentioned, because of the decrease in the level that triggers lead, and don't quote me on the numbers, you know them better than I do, 10 down to five microliters or something like that.
Yeah, microliters per, yeah.
See, I did learn something at work.
You, you, you're on top of it, Mr. Mayor.
Now, do we know a cause of that? It used to be, you know, the older homes, you know, obviously, paint, window sashes.
Traditionally, housing stock and older housing, housing stock prior to 1978, where lead paint was taken out, is generally where we see, have traditionally seen a lot of the lead poisoning kits. But it's not the only source. Here in, in our district alone, what we've seen mostly in the past five years, six years, has been things like food-related. So turmeric from other countries that has a high lead level, religious artifacts within different cultures, we've seen exposures like that. So it's very important that we have the staff on hand when we see a lead-poisoned child and get that indication, that we actually go out and do an investigation to determine what the source of that lead is, so that we can help to mitigate it.
Gotcha. Yeah, toys, necklaces, jewelries?
Yeah, what we've seen in the past was jewelry that, for an infant, for example, and they would be putting it in their mouth, and it was lead-based. So we had to do education at that point, just to be able to point out what the issues were and what, and really have worked with the family to be able to come up with a different way.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Very informative, and we appreciate seeing you and the volunteers in person, so.
Well, let's hope we can keep that up.
Act of normalcy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Anybody? Good. Thanks, Charles.
I'm going to get out of y'all's way. Thank you very much, y'all.
Yeah, are we keeping this down?
Jim, I think we're rolling right into the next one.
Mr. Emmett? Unless anybody from the Board of Ed wants to join you up here?
Nope.
Flying solo?
No takers.
Yeah, nope.
We're here in spirit.
Yeah.
We'll grill, yeah, we'll grill Matt later.
We're going on this side.
Yeah, on this side.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, as I present to you the Weathersfield Public Schools Board of Education approved budget for fiscal year 2023-2024. In the audience this evening with me is Chair of the Weathersfield Board of Education, Charles Carey, Chair of the Finance and Operations Committee, Amanda Drew, and fellow board member Janice DeRoberts, as well as Business Manager Matthew Kazaka. So with our presentations, as we do each year, we never look at the, the canned pictures. We always like to tell our story. So what you see here is members, current members of the Weathersfield High School Marching Band alongside future members of the Weathersfield High School Marching Band. We did a cross-generational summer program this past summer, where we introduced our elementary students to the marching band, and they had the opportunity to march alongside their peers and develop that interest in music. So I want to get right into the numbers here this evening. We are currently working with a budget of $59,869,601. The board's approved proposed 23-24 budget calls for spending of $63,370,872. This is an increase of $3,501,271 over the current operating budget. Represents a percentage increase of 5.85% over the current budget. And let's talk about what we're looking to get. Our district needs that we have brought forward include the following. We're looking for $30,000 for the purchase of musical instruments. This is a line item that has been long neglected. It is a third of what was requested by our music department, who met with our board subcommittee with student programs and services. And the music department was tasked with coming up with a wish list of items and programs and instruments they needed. This is a beginning point. Those bass drums that are bass, instruments that you see there, not bass drums, but bases, are costly. Those are all well beyond their useful life. And as you can see there, we have many budding musicians. We're also looking for $100,000 for the purchase of classroom desktop computers. These are the computers that are in our current classrooms now, and they support our Smartboard technology. These desktop units are approximately eight years old. They have gotten to the point where they have outlived their useful life. As of 2025, the operating systems within these desktop units will no longer support our cybersecurity infrastructure and would expose the district to potential cyber hacking. So our IT team is looking for $100,000 to begin the process of phasing in new desktop units. We've gotten a lot of mileage out of our current desktop units, and again, they've reached their useful life. We're looking for a, an expenditure of $500,000 for a K6 math program. The current program that we're using, Go Math, is no longer going to be supported. So over the course of this year, we have had our teachers pilot two different programs, both iReady and Illustrator. Coming up in April, the math committee will come before the board with the selection of the next math program. We're looking for a five-year commitment for this math program as opposed to a year by year. It's more predictable, and it will certainly save us in the long term. We're looking for $60,000 to support curriculum writing at Weathersfield High School. We are awaiting our NEASC report, based on our NEASC visit that occurred this past November. We anticipate that the NEASC visiting committee will identify the need to write new standards-based curriculum. So that is the focus there for that $60,000. We expect that NEASC report to come out to us in June. We were anticipating it this month, but NEASC is short-staffed, and they have delayed the issuance of that report. We're also looking for some staffing, and we're looking at three additional special education teachers. One identified for Weathersfield High School to support reducing the current number of caseloads for our resource teachers. At the high school level, our resource teachers average between 26 and 29 students per teacher. Very difficult to deliver services with that caseload. At the middle school level, that's similar, so our second special education teacher would be housed at Silas Dean Middle School. And then we're looking for a third special education teacher to be split at the elementary level as well. And then we're looking to add two additional social, social workers. One social worker will be housed over at Silas Dean Middle School. We're looking to begin a wellness center, similar to that that we have over at Weathersfield High School. We have found that to be extraordinarily helpful for our students that are struggling with mental health needs. That has been a major, major issue that we have faced since the COVID pandemic. And again, we're also looking for an additional social worker at the elementary level, looking to split between our two higher-enrolled elementary schools, being Emerson-Williams as well as Highcrest. In terms of changes by major object, again, this is a graph that we provide every year. The bulk of it is people. That's clear. Salaries and benefits make up a large number of the, the increase. I'd also say with regard to supplies, one of the things we have seen is certainly the impact of inflation. We've seen the cost of a case paper go up by about 30%. So that has definitely put a bite on the supply line. In terms of property, you see an increase there of 351,000, and you see a decrease in purchased property services. We are fortunate now with our one-to-one technology, the need to do a lease for a couple thousand Chromebooks has now ended. So now we're looking at replacement purchase of Chromebooks, a much smaller amount. So our infrastructure with one-to-one is actually in very good shape. I'd also say too, with regard to Chromebooks versus laptops, that question came up within our budget workshops. Chromebooks, when we're able to get a favorable deal, we got a quote this morning, $169. I do want to make sure that I let the council know that we have Chromebooks that will be ending their useful service. Google has a plan, and Google's plan is, we're not going to sell you a Chromebook, and it's good forever. The operating systems are no longer supported, about five years out. So we do have some of our Chromebook units that have reached the end of their useful life, and we're going to have to replace. Again, in terms of our budget drivers, salaries are increasing 4.38%. These are contractual increases. Our teacher salaries, it's our largest bargaining unit, increasing 2.68%. And again, this does include the new FTEs. Substitute teacher salaries are increasing 306.25%. That is a function of the curriculum writing, as well as making sure that we're budgeting for the appropriate number of units. This year, we're up about 1,000 units compared to last year. We started this year with 15 maternity and medical leaves, and we've seen many of those come back, and we've seen others go out. So that's a factor that we needed to make sure that we put into place. In terms of benefits, we're looking at an increase of about 4.8%. It's 14.77% of our total operating budget. Right now, at this point in time, we're projecting a 12% premium increase for health insurance. Again, we'll work with the town and Mike O'Neill, and we'll look to see if that number, in fact, comes down. But right now, we're anticipating 12%. And with defined benefit, we're currently projecting 3.18% increase and 6.3% increase. And again, these numbers, we'll look to get from Mike O'Neill from the town and solidify I do want to make mention of the fact, during the pandemic, we had a couple of years where we finished well under budget. We were able in 2020, 2021, to reduce 625,000, come back to the town. And then the prior year, 21, 22, we reduced 805,000, that was returned to the town. And again, the reason for that was, we had much lower transportation costs, we were hybrid, so we didn't have students in as much. And then in 2020, obviously, from March through June, the district was closed. Again, the other piece too, we're looking at with, that was the fact that hybrid learning, we obviously were not spending nearly as much on sub-costs. That was one of the things, when we were hybrid or we were full remote, we had a much lower need for substitutes at that point in time. Again, I want to take a look at contracted services. Instructional program improvement is increasing 31%. And again, one of the things that we've seen here in Weathersfield is, we have seen a large diversification of our community. I've talked about this before. When I started in Weathersfield in 2008, we had approximately 100 English-language learners. We are now north of 400 English-language learners, speaking a wide variety of languages. So one of the things that we're looking to do is make sure that we're providing interpretation services for our staff members to be able to engage our parent community. The other piece that we're looking at for next year is, we're anticipating legal services increasing, and this is a function of several contracts that we'll be negotiating next year. We anticipate negotiating with the secretaries and parent educators, the nurses, as well as our administrative group. Again, I mentioned it earlier, we're seeing a decrease for instructional rents and leases. This is due to the ending of the lease of Chromebooks. One thing we will see an increase on, based on current numbers, an increase in magnet tuition. This is due to higher enrollment at CREG and specifically LEARN, the Connecticut River Academy over in East Hartford. It's a LEARN magnet. We've seen an increase in the number of students attending that particular school. Again, I mentioned it earlier, the issue with supplies. Obviously, the process of inflation has really hit hard when it comes to supplies. And again, books and periodicals, we're also looking at an increase there, and that is a function of the rollout of a new math program for next year. Technology equipment, again, this is a function of the Chromebooks, switching from leasing to purchasing. It's an increase of 377.65%. And then we're also looking to see a dues increase for various subscriptions that we have. For example, we're members of CAE, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and there's a cost for that. We also are connected with many other professional organizations, and again, the increases are there for year-over-year just increases. Do want to show you a little bit with regard to our budget increases inflation. So you can see over the past three years how things have really escalated. The other thing I want to draw to your attention too is the District Reference Group, D, historical per pupil spending. In 2010, Weathersfield, out of the 24 districts within that reference group, was ranked 10th. And at this point in 2022, the district ranked 19 out of 24. And one of the things we've been fortunate about recently is receiving additional ECS money. I will tell you, I had the opportunity to host two of our local elected officials, Amy Moore and Bello, as well as Jeff Curry, the Chair of the House Education Committee. We were over at Hanmer last week. And currently, working its way through the legislature is House, Legislature Legislative Office Building, is House Bill 5003. This is a bill that we are watching very carefully. If passed, will offer additional ECS funding to Weathersfield. And it is designed to make a more equitable formula. So that is working its way through the legislature now. Certainly, we support it, and we've let our elected officials know. So that's something to watch in this legislative session. Want to talk to you a little bit about the budget timeline and how we got here. As a Board of Education, we convened on three different occasions. And again, Deputy Mayor Mazzarella, thank you, you attended two of the three workshops. We had one on Saturday, February 25th. It was an opportunity for all of our department leaders to come forward and talk about needs within departments. On Wednesday, March 1st, our principals came and spoke with board members about needs based in each building. And then on March 8th, we wrapped up the budget workshops and moved forward to a superintendent's presentation of the proposed budget, and that occurred at a special board meeting last Monday, March 13th. At that meeting, the board unanimously approved the budget as presented at a 5.85% increase. I am fortunate to be standing before you this evening for a presentation to town council. Next steps certainly will be the town-wide budget hearing coming up on Monday, April 17th, and then your task of allocating the budget no later than May 15th. So there's our presentation. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions that I'm unable to answer, obviously, we'll research and provide you that answer ASAP.
Any questions for Mr. Emmett? Councilman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Emmett, thank you very much. Appreciate it, as always. Each year, it's always the personal services and the benefits are always the biggest cost drivers here, and 1.7 million in salary increase, and then about 500 for, for benefits. Are those all contractually obligated, or is it kind of a mixed bag?
They're contractually obligated, Mr. Hill.
And in, so, appreciate that. And then the $3.5 million increase, is there a number or percentage that we could look to that, of that X amount? or percentage that we could look to that, of that X amount is contractually obligated and X amount is, for a better term, discretionary?
Yeah, so the discretionary, and I put an asterisk next to discretionary, because realistically speaking, the math program, that's a have-to-have. The Chromebooks, it's a have-to-have. The desktop units is a have-to-have. Certainly, we'd like to do the musical instruments as well. And then I would also say in terms of have-to-have, the request for the positions, when I started in 2008 as Director of Special Services, we had a prevalence rate of special education of just around 10 percent. We are now hovering near 15 percent. So the prevalence rate has gone up pretty dramatically. And with the exception of adding additional staff for our district-level programs, like our STRIVE program at Hanmer, and our ABA LEAP program at Webb, we have not added any special education positions in buildings to support our students with resource needs or behavioral needs. So it's a difficult question to answer in terms of what's discretionary and what's not. I think we approached it looking at it pragmatically. Again, I know 5.85 is not a low number. We did take a look at other area towns. We looked at other reference groups as well. And we've seen anywhere from mid-4s. We saw out to the east, a 10. And then down in Fairfield County, someone came in at 12.07. So, you know, again, we understand that it is a large number here, but I think, you know, within our requests here, we're looking at it from an approach of, these are things that we need. I don't see a lot of discretionary here.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
It's okay.
No, go ahead.
Councilman Lesser?
I suspect there'll be different areas.
[laughing] Thank you, Mayor. Michael, thank you for the presentation and all that you do. And Matt, Chuck, and Amanda and Janice, thank you for all you do. And I know it's been a difficult few years. I wanted to talk to you about three specific areas, and I guess one at a time is good. First, the two social workers, one at the middle school and one at the elementary school. And I know over the past several years, we've been hiring additional social workers and psychologists. Can you speak to the need for the addition in the whole social-emotional learning from COVID and perhaps even before that, in terms of why the needs are growing and why you think you need those two extra positions?
Yeah, I think the answer there is twofold. Certainly, in terms of the number of requests from students and families needing that mental health support, we have seen that dramatically increase. I think the other piece that we need to be aware of also is, we know down the road that our ESAR dollars and our rescue plan funding dollars are going to be ending. And we needed to be able to think ahead. So right now, we have a contract with Effective School Solutions that has provided additional clinical support in our buildings. That will end after next year. And that is a contract that we will not be able to afford to continue. Having this gap, this overlap of the additional social work support will prepare us when that ends. I'd also like to make sure that the council is aware of the fact that we have been diligent in terms of reaching out and looking for grant funding. We have been afforded two grants this year. One grant focused on reconnecting students. So we now have our Silas Dean Middle School Encore Program. It is currently servicing 42 students from Silas Dean with an extended-day program that includes counseling component, homework academic component, and a social athletic component done with our partners at the Weathersfield Police Department. In addition to that, at Weathersfield High School, we applied for a mental health services grant with the State of Connecticut. We were one of 92 districts that applied. We were one of only 20 in the state that got that. That will provide additional social work support that will be targeted to meet the needs of students that are disengaged and not coming to school. I've got about 200 students at Weathersfield High School right now that have already missed over 10 percent of the school year. That's a lot. That's a lot. And that's what we have continued to struggle with over the course of this year. So-
So, thank you. I know the mental health challenges of young people have grown astronomically. You mentioned that, and this was my second area, and you mentioned a little bit about the state and federal funds.
Uh huh.
I know one of the areas that the board invested heavily in was math interventionists. So using that as an example, what happens when the program dollars run out for programs? Is your anticipation to come back to the council to extend those types of programs that are either ending in the next couple of years, like, for example, the math interventionist programs?
The math interventionist, yes. We see that as a critical need moving forward, supporting our students academically. So that will be one item next year that we would look to absorb in the budget. The clinical support through ESS, we are not.
Thank you. The last area I wanted to talk to you, and we didn't go over too much in the budget, but knowing from my time on the board, as well as reading through some of the weekend reading we got on the board budget, reading through some of that stuff, that the incredible cost of out-of-district placement of special ed students. I know that there's, if I remember this correctly, one student that costs as much as $150,000 a year for that student. And I know it was an objective, and I assume it still is of the board, to try and bring as many students back to Weathersfield from out-of-district placements. Just to comment how that's going, and particular to the budget, are there any potential savings coming our way with bringing more kids back in this year per that goal? Because the costs, and you know way better than me, but they're extraordinary in some cases, including 150,000 per one student, so.
They are, yes. They are absolutely, Mr. Lesser. In terms of those students coming back, I don't have specific numbers in terms of who potentially would be transitioning back in. But let me give you an example of some of the cost avoidance that we've been able to integrate with our LEAP and ABA program. As I speak to you this evening, I have a total of 42 students from pre-K through 6 that are over at Webb in our LEAP program and our ABA program, Applied Behavior Analysis for Students with Autism. Being able to keep those 42 students in district and not have to outplace them saves the town a tremendous amount of money. Beyond that piece is, I've got families that maintain connection with their school district. I have students that do not have to get on a bus and travel from here to Plainville, or to Windsor, or wherever these outplacements are. It has been a huge benefit, cost benefit to the district, as well as a benefit to the families. Right now, as of last month, we had 38 students that were outplaced. Previous years, we've had anywhere from 45 to 55 students outplaced. I do want to say again, special, as I always say, special education is the wild card. We may have a student that moves in from another town, and we may not be able to provide the supports necessary. We may need to go for an outplacement. But we always strive to provide a free and appropriate public education in a least restrictive environment.
I appreciate that. I get that. Thank you, Mayor. That's it. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Mike, a couple-
Yes, sir.
-a couple of questions I want to go over. So with the personal services, salaries and benefits, would it be possible for you to break out, provide us with the information that, to break out, what's the existing cost, salaries and benefits of the staff that was approved last year?
Okay.
Versus new positions, new additions across all, you know, I don't know, paraprofessionals, substitutes, all that, right? So that we could see what it was, what I, I guess I'm having trouble with the word contractual obligations. So I want to see contractual obligations for the existing staff.
Uh huh.
And then the additions with their benefits that will become contractual obligations.
Got you. Okay.
Okay? I don't know if I explained that properly.
Sorry. If we need any clarification, I'll just be happy to reach out. We'll get you that.
Yeah. Just trying to look at, you know, what's the, what's the net change with the added positions? The math program, would it be possible to do the math program year by year, even realizing that it may cost a little bit more? Say it's, say it's 100 and a quarter each year for five years. Is that technically possible, or do they stop writing that program, or?
It is, good question. It is technically possible. I estimate that doing year-over-year will end up costing the district about 268,000, as opposed to doing the five-year commitment.
Okay. If we, what I'm looking at is, you know, if we can turn 500 into 150 going forward. When I was going through the, all the detail, noticed some charges related to Corpus Christi. And I understand we have to provide a nurse, we have to provide bus transportation.
Yes.
Is there any other, do we have any other classes that we have to provide, you know, science classes or anything like that? Or are those the two main?
Now, we're responsible actually for providing evaluation services as well. So if a parent requests an evaluation, it would fall upon this district because Corpus Christi is housed here in Weathersfield. So even if I have a student that is not a Weathersfield student, I still have the obligation, if they're attending Corpus Christi, to provide that evaluation. It does not mean that I would provide an IEP, but I would have to offer a service plan for that individual student. So that is another one of those factors. And you are correct. We by law have to provide a nurse, and we do provide transportation as well.
Is there, is it possible for you to gather those costs and give us one lump price for Corpus Christi costs, if you will?
I can certainly get information in terms of how many evaluations we've done this year, how many PPTs and 504 meetings we've attended. Obviously, from a staffing perspective for those meetings, one of my administrators within the Special Services Department is responsible for attending those. So I can get that information.
Ballpark is what I'm looking for.
Okay.
You know, we've been having conversations about parking lot?
Yes.
And I'm looking to-
Yes.
-share some information with people about what kind of services we provide and at what costs.
Understood. Yep.
You talked about special ed or special needs going from 10 percent to 15 percent? I don't know, remember how many years difference. Is there a general reason for that, or are we, have the rules changed for determining whether someone needs extra help or so? Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, I think what we've seen here is, we have seen in terms of the diagnosis of autism, we have seen a much sharper focus on that. And that's done in conjunction with the pediatrician. I think the other piece that we've really tried hard here in Weathersfield to do is to start especially with students with autism, to get them right at birth to three. And we have our typical peer preschool program, so, you know, it's four days a week. On that fifth day, on that Friday, our staff, they are out visiting homes, they are working on transitioning services. So those kids at age, once they get to age three and they're ready to come into a preschool program, we are catching them and we're providing them with services. I think another area where we see a large number of referrals is language disorder. Our speech and language pathologists have large caseloads at this point in time. We've seen a fair number of identifications for OHI, other health impaired, and that kind of centers around students with Attention Deficit Disorder. And the other piece too, Mr. Mazzarella, is in addition to the 504, the district is also responsible for assessing and implementing a Section 504 plan. So if a student doesn't qualify for special education services, for example, a student may break a leg at a soccer game and needs accommodations, we have an obligation to convene a Section 504 meeting and provide, whether it's specialized bus transportation, it may be access to a staff bathroom, access to the elevator, we have an obligation to provide those services. So that's another one of the things that we, across the district from pre-K right through 22, we provide.
Grant money. So in, I recall in past years, you would see a line item for a salary position, and it would say grant-funded or partially grant-funded. I didn't see any of that this year. I don't know if I missed it, or it doesn't. So I guess my question is, do you still have grants available, ESAR money, or ARPA money, or whatever?
We, yep.
And what is that money used for? How come it's not like spelled out in the budget? I know you had mentioned at one of the workshops where you paid for furniture and you, I forget the other item, furniture and-
We purchased, yeah, I know, we purchased, we used our cafeteria fund to purchase tables for Silas Dean-
And you did flooring, that's what it was.
That is correct, because you had in the capital improvement, two years down the road, $30,000 to replace the rubberized floor that has pulled away from the walls and has become a trip hazard. So we talked with the state and got approval from the state to utilize the cafeteria fund. And again, the cafeteria fund is directly related to breakfast and lunch, and it is very restrictive in terms of how you can spend it. So in lieu of having to put it in capital improvement, this summer, we will be replacing the floor. So, much needed. And then with regard to the furniture, it was the same thing. We had these old institutional-style tables where you packed 12 to 14 kids on a side. We replaced those with round units that seat between eight and 10 kids. It's a much more professional and very well-liked environment over at Silas Dean at this point.
So are some of those funds like used for the math interventionists?
No, the math interventionists, that is ARPA funding, Mr. Mazzarella.
Okay. But those positions are not in this budget?
They are not, because ARPA funding goes through next year. Those math intervention positions will be in next year's budget.
Which was 800,000, if I remember.
700,000.
Yeah. Okay. And then lastly, try not to ask too many questions. The last chart there, the DURG, Historical Pupil Spending, does such a chart exist for performance, for, within the DURG?
Not this specifically, but if you go to EdSite.com, it's a clearinghouse of all educational data, from suspension data, attendance data, academic performance data, staff attendance data. It has everything. And you can break it down. You can look at our District Reference Group, DURG-D. You can compare us to Glastonbury, compare us to Hartford, and you can break that down.
So what I'm trying to determine, like, if we're, we're below the DURG for per-pupil spending, does our pupil, you know, student performance follow that same amount of shift? Or are we doing a better job of, you know, utilizing the money we have to get a better performance?
I think we've done remarkably well with what we've gotten, and would certainly like to have the opportunity to do even more. So let me give you an example, the Next Gen results. Next Generation Accountability Results. School districts and schools are identified on a numerical value of one down to five. Being in four, Level Four or Level Five, those are levels where you would get state intervention. Level Three, Level Two, and Level One, obviously, Level One is where you want to be. That's where you're closing your achievement gap. That's where you're performing highly across the board. You're free and reduced. You're special education. So this past year, we had, Hanmer School again was identified as a school of distinction. It is one of only 127 elementary schools in the state that achieved that distinction. We also had two other schools within the district that moved from Level Three to Level Two. Weathersfield High School went from Level Three, moved up to Level Two. And Webb Elementary School also moved up from Level Three to Level Two. So I would think that under the circumstances, we are making some good progress. Now, if I stood up here and said I was satisfied with it, mm, no. You know me better than that. Been here for a while. We can always do better. And again, we're looking to get the resources necessary to help push that forward.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? And Deputy Mayor's pretty humble, but I'll say it for him. He actually went to all three of those meetings. The third meeting, he missed because there was a time change that never made it to-
And I was out, I was in the parking lot. I met with two of our board members that didn't get the communication either. Sorry about that, Deputy Mayor.
I figured you didn't want me there.
We had to, we had the girls' co-op hockey finals that night down at Quinnipiac. And I know last year, I missed the state title game. I was here.
Yes.
So unfortunately, we didn't make it this year in the boys. But sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you, and thank you, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Forrest.
If you were going, no problem.
No, because you may be able to ask a question that I was going to ask.
[laughing]
Because two of them are already been asked.
Superintendent Emmett, I noticed that there was a lot of support services in your budget, but I didn't necessarily see- Superintendent Emmett, I noticed that there was a lot of support services in your budget, but I didn't necessarily see any sort of, you know, full-time classroom teachers. And over the years, we've talked about, I'd say especially at the high school, but not exclusively at the high school, the need for additional FTE. I remember talking to you about math specifically in very large classes. Can you talk about class sizes? It doesn't have to be limited to the high school, and about whether or not we have the appropriate FTE to teach our kids in an environment where the class size, where kids can get the education that they need and not be diminished because there are too many kids in a class.
In terms of, start elementary level, I've got two bubbles at the elementary level, one at grade six at Webb that will be moving off to the middle school. So we'll see that number go down. And then we also have a bubble over at High Crest, and that, we have, currently have four sections, so we're not looking at reducing that at all. At the high school level and middle school level, we have a high subscription in world language. That's, that's certainly an area we'd like to expand upon. The high school principal, Mrs. O'Connor, when she met with the board at the workshop, talked about enhancing CTE and adding a position there. And I think at this point in time, when we look at it, in terms of priority, what we saw, the priority first and foremost would be student support services. One of the things we were able to do a couple of years ago, we had a retirement, and the retirement was somebody that was at the top level. We were able to hire two positions at step one that ended up being a wash. So we were able to add a position that way. I think in terms of one area we also have to look at is making sure we're able to fill the positions that we have. So as I'm talking to you this evening, I have currently thirteen vacancies within the paraeducator and behavior specialist ranks. So that's been a challenge. We for next year are already working on building our pools for candidates, even before the budget is done. Typically, we'll wait to post positions, but we're posting positions now. Would love to have some additional content area teachers at the high school, but at this point in time, knowing where we were coming in, we felt that the priority was in support services.
What is your, what are your larger class sizes in K through five right now? Because obviously, six is gonna go on to the middle school.
Twenty, twenty-six and twenty-seven was the last count at Webb. And then I'm at the High Crest group that's like twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
And then what's your twenty-seven, what grade is that?
Sixth.
Okay, non-K through six though?
Non-K.
Non, non-six, K through five.
K through five, I'd have to look, I can get you the enrollment numbers, we'll run them this week.
In the high school, what are the larger classes in the high school size?
High school, you're probably gonna have around thirty.
So there's not, there are no, no classes, you don't think, that are more than thirty kids in a class?
It's going to depend upon.
It's not from study hall?
Yes. I'm gonna be starting on study halls. Now, we, I can pull those, those numbers for you, Councilman Forrest.
And is there an area, if you were to add, you know, not you, but you know, in consultation, of course, with your staff? If there was an area to add in direct education rather than, you know, support, I guess, where, where would you see the priorities for the school?
CTE, CTE and science in my book.
And why those two areas?
I think that in terms of CTE, the computer technology education, I, I think that we are not able to offer as many electives as I'd like to for our students. And I'd like to expand upon science offerings as well.
But what is, and what's the basis? Is it up, is to prepare for certain colleges? Are we seeing a deficiency? Like, why those areas?
I, I see it as being able to provide kids with some flexibility. With our graduation requirements being the twenty-five that they are, what we tend to find is we're finding some students are limited in terms of taking electives and end up in the dreaded study hall. So being able to provide additional options for students, and we've come up with some really interesting classes at Weathersfield High School, and those interesting classes are very highly subscribed. They're very popular, and we want to make sure that we give kids the opportunity. If they don't get them freshman year, they at least get the opportunity in sophomore, junior, or senior year.
I'd like to change the conversation to the Go Math or the math curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Guess I had the pleasure of being on the committee that put the Go Math curriculum in place, and this was maybe, what, eight or ten years ago?
Yes.
Ballpark. Can you tell us what is the, what is not being supported that you're asking the council to make a change from Go Math?
It's, the, the program itself is no longer going to be produced.
Produced, like books are not going to be printed?
Correct.
Is that, is it, is it a book printing problem?
Yes.
Is it solely a book printing problem?
It's, yeah, it's not being supported.
And does that mean book printing?
Yes.
Versus other support?
Correct.
Support could mean a million things.
Correct, so I'm not going to get teacher manuals anymore, I'm not going to get lessons anymore, I'm not going to get all of the computer supports that we have, and all of the worksheets and workbooks.
So is that, can you purchase that program and so we don't have to actually purchase another program? Can we buy Go Math? I mean, it's math for cases.
Well, if they're not going to produce it and I buy it, how, and I go through it like all of my workbooks that students are going to use, how am I going to replenish it?
I was thinking more from like an intellectual property standpoint, I'm guessing that they own the intellectual property. So we, if we purchased it, then we could print it, it's half a million dollars we're talking about, right?
I, I, I would question how much it would cost to, to purchase it?
Yeah.
And then how much it would cost me to print it if I was going to own it as intellectual property?
Have you looked into that?
I can certainly do that.
We had a conversation back ten, eight, ten years ago about, and it was significant money then to transfer into the Go Math, that these shifts are tremendously expensive. I can't remember the number, but it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, it may even have been more than half a million dollars that we talked about. And we have the same sort of discussions, we talk about, when we talk about ongoing contracts for like computer technology, right? We might have the, like the technology itself costs a hundred thousand to buy, but then the maintenance is a hundred thousand dollars a year, so it looks like a hundred thousand, but it's really one million dollars. How do we get off of the roller coaster of somebody supporting something for a certain amount of time? In the energy area, we call this open source, right? Somebody controls, somebody else controls you in order to move, to move forward. How do we, if we have, spend a half a million dollars now, why in five years are we not gonna have to spend another half a million dollars for a program that's not supported, which is just the intellectual property and printing of books? According to what we just discussed, how do we get off of this roller coaster? And I'm even like thinking in my mind, let's get together with Newington, they got half a million dollars, and Rocky Hill, another half a million, I mean, that's one, you could get ten construct curriculum specialists and pay them for that amount of money to create our own curriculum. And that's not to say that we don't already have our own curriculum. So I'm trying to, how do we get off of this train of every few years having to spend a tremendous amount of money for a supportive curriculum?
Well, I'll certainly take a look at the intellectual property issue and see what that might entail. I'd also like to make sure that I make mention of the fact that these programs also require professional development. I have to make sure that I have teachers that are well-trained in these programs, and that is one thing. In terms of time and supports, that's a challenge, that's a challenge.
Is there anything, is the Go Math program that we currently have, is there anything like pedagogically wrong with it? Does it serve our students well currently in its current state?
It's, I think it's served our students well. I will tell you, having had the opportunity to go and to look at the pilots, and I had an opportunity to spend an hour in a sixth grade classroom at Charles Wright. And what I saw with the math program there, it was called illustrative, was a stark difference from what I saw with Go Math. And I think one of the things when we talk about educational programs, it's always rooted in research. You're gonna hear me down the road talking about the science of reading. We don't have anything in for the science of reading at this point in time, because we've asked the state for an extension. But the reality of it is this, our model, our workshop model, that we have put in place and have had in place since probably two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, it is not on the state-approved list. So we're gonna have to take a look at that down the road. And when I was in that classroom, watching that math instruction at Charles Wright, and talking with the teacher who said that this was head and shoulders above what they were doing in Go Math, in terms of their discourse, in terms of the problem solving, it's a different model. And I think that that's, you know, one thing I want to be careful of is I don't want to get stuck on a program, and I've said this to the state. It's not a program that teaches the kids, it's a high-quality teacher that's well-trained, that knows their stuff, and we have many of those across our district.
I, I agree with you, which is why this expense for programs versus teachers is, is difficult to swallow.
Understand.
Because it doesn't correspond to what you just said, and I'm in agreement with you. On the same concept, you talk about the Google Chromebooks and non-supporting that technology, and then us being, again, forced to purchase, not because the, not because the machines don't work, but because they're not supported. What concept can we put in place in order to protect the town and Board of Education, which is, I consider is all one community? To not have to get into that position where we are forced to spend money because of like a planned obsolescence versus the machines are broken? Because it sounds like the machines aren't broken, it's a support issue, is that generally correct?
Yes.
So how do we get out of that, machine's not broken, but somebody's not supporting it, so go spend X hundreds of thousands of dollars? Is there a way out of that?
I don't see there being a way out of that, Councilman Forrest, at this point in time. Because what I would worry about here, if Google is not supporting the platform, I don't want to expose the district to any type of cyber attack.
Are there other platforms that are available in education besides Google's platform?
Not that we have looked at.
But are there any others?
I would be happy to look into that for you. Again, I, when I put forward this budget, I listen very carefully to my tech team, so I'm not making this, this proposal based on nothing. You know, we do shared services with IT, and Mr. DeRagan is adamant about threat vectors and issues that we face with these units. The reality is, these units, these Chromebook units go home with kids every single day. They come home, they go in. What happens if I have a Chromebook unit that does not have the latest software support and the latest cybersecurity support, and it picks up a virus on a home network? And then it comes in and infiltrates the district, and our district gets shut down. I lose Power School, which is our backbone of student information. I may lose HR functions, and the last thing I want to do is have to worry about trying to pay any type of ransom in Bitcoin to some foreign entity, which unfortunately has happened in a couple of districts.
I hear you.
So it's just.
I'm not oblivious to that, I'm just.
Sure.
Yep, I got it. And just as a heads up though, I mean, my son is, probably knows, or maybe no, he's in second grade at Charles Wright.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of the kids at that age with the instruments that they've gotten, the security on those, because we're talking about security, is not necessarily locked down to the extent that they have, they have, they have found a way around and have generally unfettered access to the internet. So you may just want to sort of take that back to the IT people and say, and there may be a little bit of a better lockdown. Now, they've done some tricks, you know, the kids are smart, and they're trying to find their way around because they want to go play a game or whatever.
That's right.
But just letting you know, please be aware that that is going on and possible.
Absolutely.
Next. On Counselor Lesser's comments related to, or thoughts related to some of the children who, of course, legally and morally were obligated, of course, to educate. But some of them are very high-value education propositions. And for years, we've talked about the recovery from private insurance of the medical costs versus the educational costs. Not that, not that they're not gonna be provided, but the recovery from it, from an accounting standpoint of those costs. Have we been able to make any progress toward recovering those medical costs in the process of education from private insurance?
We participate in Medicaid reimbursement, so we do look to bill for Medicaid. In terms of looking to bill private insurance, we did talk with our council about that, and they said it was not feasible. With regard to the Medicaid reimbursement, I'd happy, be happy to pull that information for you and have that dollar figure this week.
First of all, thank you for looking into that.
Mm-hmm.
Well done. But I'm actually more interested in the legal opinion related to the private insurance, is that shareable?
I can certainly talk with council about that, yep.
I appreciate that very much.
You got it.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for those questions. Anybody else?
Just a quick one.
Councilman Pedalo.
Thank you, Superintendent. The only question that I really had, and I was just kind of showing the deputy mayor here, I think as far as technology goes, you know, I kind of always go back, because when I was in school, like I still learned out of textbooks, and now we're sorted on Google Chromebooks. Being technology going the way that it's going, does the district have any plans to address the new artificial intelligence technology out there? Because I mean, I was just sitting here and I had no clue what Go Math does, and I, I could show everybody, I typed it into my laptop and it gave me six bullet points in the course of ten seconds. I mean, this thing is capable of writing essays, is capable of doing the math problems you're talking about. Is there any, do you foresee any issues with the, with that in terms of the, the children learning? Or is it something that you think should be incorporated into the curriculum?
I think in terms of artificial intelligence, Councilman Pedalo, we're just starting to scratch the surface with that.
That's the scary part.
That, that's something, yeah, that's something we're going to have to absolutely take a look at. You know, they're already saying that they're able to, you know, circumvent the human component with artificial intelligence. That is absolutely something we're gonna have to take a look at. I mean, I think, you know, I've said it before to council with regard to, you know, technology and the number of potential hacks. Our network is constantly under siege. I mean, we're, Jim DeRagan was saying, on average, we deal with five thousand attempted intrusions per day. So then you, you figure it with the artificial intelligence, the phishing scams, we had a phishing scam just two weeks ago, somebody purporting to be me, asking the HR director to share all the W2 information from all of our employees. So again, we've been, we have systems in place where we're able to stop that, but you, you bring up a very valid point.
I, I, I'm, that, that's absolutely what, that's also a, a critical issue, I think we need to do it. I'm, I'm more talking about how do you account for the teachers? I mean, I could type in right now, you know, hey, can you write me a, a six-page essay on, you know, the fall of the Roman Empire? And it could sit here and write it out virtually effortlessly, they could copy and paste. Is there any thought to the teachers?
Yeah, we do, we do have abilities to be able to look at those pieces, like the plagiarism piece. TurnItIn.com is one tool that we use, so we're able to tell if a student turns in a piece of work, the teacher can compare it. Another one of the things also, you know, Matthew, you brought up a very good point about, you know, students being able to get around. We have Go Guardian, so I can tell with Go Guardian where students are on our network and what they're accessing. We have dealt with students that have used Google Docs to, you know, make lists and make threats. We know, we had one last summer, the student was at home with the unit during the summer and was surprised to hear the phone ring, and it was us. Because they had said something on the computer, we had it and had a record of it, and we're able to respond. But it is, and I'll say, you know, Selvons, social media, the bane of our existence. We deal with it all the time in terms of the potential issues.
Yeah, just this one, I mean, again, for anybody who doesn't know, it's called ChatGPT. And I mean, I just gave it a prompt, it said, can you write me? I just said what I said, and I said, can you also make it untraceable through TurnItIn.com? And it said, absolutely, and it came in a thing, so it's just, for the parents out there, just be aware that, you know, work, work smarter, not harder. But I think that this definitely has the capabilities of disrupting especially the, the amount that kids learn, so.
True.
That I'll give back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, looking at the age of some of the folks up here, I think we all might remember the Blue Books in college. I don't know if you guys had those.
Nope.
Four hours handwritten.
We use slide rules.
And an abacus.
I have no clue what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett.
You're welcome, sir.
You know, a lot of the questions that I had, had been asked throughout the conversations tonight. I did have just a couple of questions to Councilman Forrest's point about the Chromebooks and being Google, derivative Google. Is this proposal to replace all the Chromebooks or just a portion of?
Just a portion of them, sir.
Because I, over the years, we have done blocks of them.
Yeah, and we, what we've been able to do is we've built up our number over the course of time through the leases. So with this purchase, we're only looking at purchasing a portion. And what they'll do is they'll replace those units that will come offline. And we have some units that are beyond five years old. And again, just the wear and tear of those units, coupled with, again, the operating system. And look, for me, I'd love Google to be able to support them forever. But you know what Google's in the business of? Unfortunately, they're in the business of making money.
So we can't do a wholesale switch over to a, a different provider? I mean, those, if we were replacing a third of the Chromebooks, still two-thirds would be on a Google platform.
Correct.
And then the newer ones would be on still Google, but with a better operating, more updated operating system?
Correct.
Okay. Another question, back to one of the first slides on the two social, no, three special ed teachers. I may be mistaken. Did we have a special education teacher that was not available at the high school this past year for a couple of months? Do we know?
A speech teacher.
A speech pathologist?
Speech pathologist, yes.
You had mentioned that. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Is that a speech pathologist that would not fall under a special education?
No, no. Speech pathologist has a different licensure.
So these three new special education teachers would be supplanting what we currently have?
They would be supporting what we currently have and would allow us to reduce the caseloads for the current special education teachers, which would increase the efficiency of being able to deliver the service.
Okay. And back to, I think Deputy Mayor's comment about grants. Is there any state funding proposed or even available for special education? In part because of, yeah, I forget the bills. Senate Bill Two last year, yeah, 5003, but I think it was 5,000, I forget what it was. May have been 5003 last year in Senate Bill Two. Increased resources for districts for special education. Did that come with additional funding for?
Yeah, good, good question. We actually just got the request for proposals for the next round of mental health grant funding. What I'll do is take a look at that. We are considering applying for that one as well. That may be a little broader with regard to special education support. I will say that they are competitive grants. I did hear from several of my colleagues, you know, how did you get the mental health grant? And we didn't. We thought our grant was very well-written. I think they all were well-written, but there was only so much to go around. I think with the next pot of money, we'll take a look at that, Mayor Rel, and see if that might give us a little more flexibility for additional sped teachers. Also, with regard to the grant, we have another grant opportunity for school safety and security. So that's one we're working on right now. So we'll be looking to submit that one within the next month.
Okay. And then finally, one thing we ask of Mike O'Neill, our own finance director, is give us periodic updates on where we are in the budget, you know? Are we meeting the target? Are we below or are we above budget? Where are we right now with the Board of Ed or where are you right now with the Board of Ed budget?
Right now, we're right on budget. Little bit, little bit under budget at this point in time, but we are expecting to come right in at zero at this point.
Okay.
And again, we meet on a monthly basis. We did miss last month due to weather. So that is a function of the Finance and Operations Committee. That information is posted publicly. Again, we've run under budget for the bulk of the year. We've seen that number shrink down a little bit with some of the out-of-district tuitions as well as magnet tuitions.
I guess our fear is always that if we're getting close to that, being under budget towards the end, that we're not spending it just to be able to spend it, you know?
No, well, and I think you saw that with the two years where we, with COVID. We returned over a million dollars over the course of two years. And certainly, what I'd like to see also is we have the 2% reserve. You know, we have gone out to RFP again for construction services to begin the work again of the long-range building plant. So obviously, with that, that 2% reserve is going to be important. So I'm certainly not looking to, to spend wildly. And I think that, you know, if you look at my history over the course of time, we haven't done that. So we've tried to be responsible. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. No further questions? I think you're good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mike.
That concludes our presentations for tonight. We do have public comment. Don't believe we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction tonight. But we do have general comments from the public. As a reminder and as information for those that haven't been here in the past, there are two public comment portions in the beginning and at the end. They are both limited to just five minutes at each. So if you can keep your testimony short, to the point, keep it within the five minutes. We do ask that if you do come up to speak, you speak, you state your name and address for us. So anybody wishing to speak? Oh, yeah. I think I saw your hand up first. And there is a sign-up sheet up there to help us prepare minutes.
Hi, Nick Raschew, 125 Walcott Hill Road. I hope everyone in this room is ashamed to hear we're 19th out of 24 towns. That's deplorable. I cannot honestly believe that. We went from 10th to 19th in the course of a few years. That's shocking to me. So since I'm a numbers person and I enjoy numbers, let's talk about return on investment. While back, this town gave tax payment to Safety Store for $800,000. What's the return on investment for that? Give a tax payment to the board for $1.4 million. Return on investment for that? DECED, not only a few months ago, talked about a million dollars just to give away for economic development. So return on investment on that? Let's talk about some of the dollars that are spent in this town, which is still shocking to me. Kaisha Farms, heard a lot of commentary about that, what to do, how to spend more money. ARPA funding, one of my favorites. Police Athletic League, $150,000 line item. Could have been a teacher, but here we are. Police Activity League. Same thing with police vehicles. Asset forfeiture, $160,000 for two vehicles plus a charging station. Return on investment for that? Zero, last time I checked. Assets are going to depreciate, not going to be worth anything. Money out the door yet again. Could have been spent better. Secretary Lieutenant Emmett, although we may have some things we disagree on, but $1.43 million came back to this town over two years of budget, back to this town. They were under budget for two years, which I give them credit for, and the fact that it came back is great. For the life of me, police overtime, $518,000. Sounds like a few teachers to me, maybe some school spending that might have taken place. Physical services is an absolute nightmare. There's a reason we need a long-term building plan. It's because we can't keep the things we have nice to begin with. So let's spend millions of dollars on that because we can't do it right in this town. Road paving. Let's talk about Millwoods. Let's talk about downtown. Millions of dollars that this council has salvaged over spending money over, but now we're going to try nickel and dime education. It's just shocking to me. Downtown Development, Millwoods, playing fields. I listened to that meeting. We want to spend so much money on playing fields. Again, return on investment. It's enjoyable, don't get me wrong. I got it. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, for what exactly? What's your return on investment? Education has a return on investment. Get a good education, decent jobs. Study over study keeps proving that lifetime earnings are significantly increased by an educational offering. I can talk about the HVAC at the community center. Another half million dollars. Okay, let's spend more money. Why not? Solar, there actually is a return on investment for that. And all I keep hearing is this great idea, like, listen, you give us a million dollars now, we'll save you a million dollars 20 years from now. Again, shocking, shocking to me. Town council travel budget, 40 grand. Where'd that go? $40,000 for travel? What? We spent $39,466 when we went in February, February 6th, I believe. And yet here we are, $40,000. Guess what? A third of a teacher. Gone. Yet here we go, and I keep coming back to this. Do you know who Dave LaSalle is? You don't, because he's the 19th-ranked pickleball player in men's singles. Because no one wants to be 19th. This is ridiculous. The amount of money that I've seen this town go through in the past six months through ARPA funding and absolute waste and debacles is incredible to me. And what I'll finish is, since Mr. Young is here, I looked it up, and on November 22nd, 2022, and they just published this, the Weathersfield Arts League got their 501(c)(3) letter from the IRS. So whoever fast-tracked that through, whoever was involved, more power to them. It's the fastest I've ever seen a nonprofit go through. That right now, that building is assessed at $206,100 and change. Would have been approximately $8,000 in tax per year over the past, I don't know, 50 years? $400,000. And today's money, probably double that. So this town has a spending problem. The spending problem isn't with education, it's with everything else. The police ask for something, everyone's falling over themselves for the sake of safety. How about looking at from a return on investment for this town?
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, in the white.
Do I have to say my name and everything? I forgot. Okay. Oh, yeah, I see it now. Sorry, yep, okay. Good evening. My name is Carrie Hill, and I've spoken before you all before. And I stand before you again to ask for you to really consider the budget and what our schools need for this coming school year. I'm invested in our town's school education. I attended the Weathersfield Public Schools. I returned from Boston to teach here. And now I'm the proud parent of two elementary-age children, fourth and second grade, and a pre-K three-student at Webb. We really need to show our support for our educators right now. The resources we need to make available to them and our students needs to be increased by much more than what Mr. Emmett and the Board of Ed have put forward. We need to work together as a town to increase the value we place on education here. We need to support this budget and get the funds back into education, to our schools and to our staff members. Across the nation, teachers are walking away from the profession in the middle of the day, in the middle of the year. We don't want that to happen in this district. I have had the lovely pleasure of working with some of the brightest, most innovative, and basically best professionals that we have. They are caring, kind, and compassionate. They act as teachers, nurses, social workers, mentors, friends, forging relationships with each student, even with very large class sizes. They spend time learning about their students and helping them become readers, writers, mathematicians, and musicians. But they really can't help our students develop who they're supposed to be because our town leaders and the people of our community aren't showing them the support they need and deserve by approving this budget. We need newer instruments. We need a math program that's going to continue to allow our students to understand 21st-century concepts and be able to compete with peers across the state. The computers for our staff members to be able to continue their collaborative work. And, most importantly, more support staff to ease the burden of the large caseloads. I don't know if those slides were included to you over the weekend where you could see, school by school, from elementary all the way up to the high school and middle school, what the hours are. But the caseloads in our schools, as I hope you were able to see, show that we don't have enough staff to support the growing needs of our students. The proposed budget includes five additional staff positions. We need them and more. Please, listen to the information presented on the caseloads and mental health impacts and counseling. I encourage you, go into the classrooms, go and speak to the administrators and the staff. Gain a sense of what is happening every day, because it's hard to be teaching. It's hard for our students to be attending the school and not getting what they need. Five, five new positions isn't enough, but it's at least a start. We just need more. Our town needs to step it up and start to remember the value and importance of education. That begins by working together and supporting the time and effort, Mr. Emmett, and the Board of Ed members put into thinking this budget through. That begins supporting this so that our administrators, teachers, and staff members know we value them. We want to support them, and we want them to stay here in Weathersfield. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, right in the middle.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Zapata. I live at 444 Middletown Avenue, and I've been joined by some pickleballers, I see. So I'm writing this letter in support of pickleball at Millwoods. Imagine Weathersfield investing in the fastest-growing sport over the last three years. Our neighbors to the north, south, east, and west have embraced pickleball by building new courts and lining the existing tennis courts to maximize the use. Pickleball statistics from Sports Fitness Industry, also SFIA, for 2023 include 158.6 average growth rate over the last three years. 18 to 34 is the largest age bracket. I take issue with that because most of the pickleballers in the room are older than 60. 36.5 million, the number of pickleball players in the U.S., and 7.7 forecasted compounded annual growth rate for 2028. We strongly encourage the town council to reconsider additional pickleball courts for our town. Our neighbors in all directions understand increasing support opportunities generates growth and improves social and economic development. The sport appeals to all ages and is truly multi-generational. Pickleball is exploding in all markets and in all towns. We ask Weathersfield to strengthen and broaden sporting opportunities for all and get excited about the pickleball movement. I hope not to hurt this guy who said pickleball. So yes, to pickleball. And it really would cost not very much to add some additional lines. You don't have to mow. You don't have to.
I'll take mine.
You don't have to do anything. We've been playing year, throughout the winter, and there's been no maintenance on these courts. It doesn't require anyone to get out there and do any work. So thank you for listening, and please consider our request.
Just, my name's Mary Gatheres, 16 State Street. I'm here to ask you to reevaluate your decision not to provide funding for the new pickleball courts at Millwoods. Due to the, its simplicity and affordability, multi-generational appeal, and low cost in the long run, pickleball is a sport that should be supported by towns hoping to promote physical activity spaces for people of all ages. First of all, pickleball is an easy game to learn and play. I introduced pickleball skills to my elementary PE students during COVID and was really pleased to discover that students as young as eight years old picked up on the skills and were quickly able to play some simple games. Similarly, adults can easily acquire the skills to play games in just one outing. As a bonus, the cost for a beginner set of paddles and balls is really quite reasonable. Pickleball is a sport that is fun for people of all ages. The sport is certainly growing in popularity in the United States and is not simply enjoyed by senior citizens. In fact, according to the United, to United States Pickleball, the average age for a pickleball player is 38 years old. The element of multi-generational fun was on display on a recent Monday afternoon at the Stillman Courts, when I witnessed a grandmother enjoying a pickleball game with her daughter and her grandchildren. My own daughters, who are in their 20s, participate in pickleball leagues in their hometowns of Boston and Minneapolis, respectively. As more young adults play pickleball, it seems logical to me that towns such as Weathersfield would want to provide recreational facilities that would entice young people to purchase homes in town. Building pickleball courts at Millwoods makes good economic and recreational sense in the long run. Despite the $300,000 upfront cost, pickleball courts don't require a lot of ongoing maintenance, such as soccer and baseball fields, which require weekly grass cutting and monthly line striping. Additionally, pickleball courts can be used almost all year long. The group I play with has been bundling up and playing pickleball outside all winter due to, due to the mild temperatures and lack of snowfall. Pickleballers are a hearty, fun-loving group of people. Trust me, if you build the courts, the players will come. In conclusion, I think the funding for pickleball courts at Millwoods should be reevaluated and improved by the town council. The decision to add pickleball courts would not only provide a wonderful physical activity, activity option for people of all ages and athletic abilities, but would also entice home buyers to consider putting down roots in town. Thank you.
I, Maria Tugis, 111 Colonel Chester.
Maria Tugus, 111 Colonel Chester Drive in Weathersfield. It is truly a family sport. Every time I've gone out and played with the group that plays, one or more of their children join us. And so, as Mary said, when her daughters are visiting in Weathersfield, they come and play with the group, and it really does promote family unity. It's a great way to socialize for, you know, generations of people. So, again, I know you guys are faced with so much coming at you all the time, but it really will be a situation where the town, East Hartford has courts, we have two courts right now in all, the whole town. Many tennis courts, which I am a former tennis player, many tennis courts go unused all year long. We're fighting with tennis people and other pickleball players at two courts at Stillman. East Hartford has ten courts, something like that. All the other local towns, Rocky Hill has the park there on the border, they only let Rocky Hill citizens play there. So we're really behind the eight ball. So we hope that you'll consider our request and find a way to add one or two more courts, if possible, to the town. Thank you.
My name's Ken Nyren. I live at 15 Coleman Road, and I appreciate listening to you all tonight. You've worked very hard to make our town a great place. It's not an easy decision on the budget, I'm sure. I'm just here to speak briefly in favor of the pickleball courts in Mill Woods. My wife and I just started playing a few weeks ago over at the Stillman Park, and yeah, it's hard. The lines are painted, we appreciate that, but they're really tennis courts, they're not dedicated pickleball courts, and they're quite crowded. We're just learning, and we just jam in, they're very friendly, they'll just play. But it would be nice to have a couple more courts, especially if there was grant money available. I understood that there was a possibility of that. I don't know where that stands, but I just wanted to speak out in favor of it. It's, I think it's good for the town, property values being such a fast-growing sport of the future. Tennis is probably going to fade from what we can tell, and the courts, you could remake them over, but brand-new ones at Mill Woods would be a good asset to the town. So, thank you.
Susan Sample, Ken's wife. Just one more voice for pickleball. Just the couple points I wanted to make that others haven't said yet is, West Hartford has fourteen pickleball courts. We just spent, we were in the Racket Coop store in West Hartford, and the owner there said he's pretty sure Newington is about to add pickleball courts. And if you look around town by town, it's usually the towns that are considered more prestigious, more successful towns that have pickleball courts available. And although it's good for all generations, we do know that there's increased interest in pickleball among people who are middle-aged and approaching retirement, and we know that that is a population that would be good for us to retain in town for property values and also for a tax base. And so I'm very hopeful that some additional pickleball courts can be developed in Weathersfield. Thank you.
Peter Beller, live at 490 Main Street. I'm part of the pickleball group, too. If you, I have rackets, so if everybody wants to play, we can have a little demonstration. But it's a great sport to play, and with only the two courts, there have been times when we've been playing there and other people haven't been able to play either tennis or pickleball, or we've shown up and the courts are full. So I think four courts at Mill Woods would be greatly appreciated. As everybody has said, I think it's a great sport. It gets people together, it's multi-generational, even though the young kids kill us. And so I think it really is something that we would appreciate and the town could use and would be beneficial for the town. Thank you.
Just one second. Just a question for the pickleballers. Now, is Tim Gatheres a pickleballer, or are you the number-one fan and cheering section of...
The cheering section.
He's a pickleballer.
I got it. There's a target right on the same time.
I've lost him several times.
Oh, boy.
Played some of these people and lost all, so...
You can ask him, is he a dinker, dinker or a banger? That's the question you want to ask.
One of these days, Tim, I'll ask that. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Mary K. Jensen. I live at 23 Quill Hill. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, I was just going to listen. I know the vote for the Board of Ed comes next month, but I was just thinking I wanted to respond to the class sizes. I feel like all of High Crest is a bubble. My son is in fifth grade, and my daughter is in the official bubble class in third grade, but my son's at twenty-seven in his class. The fifth grade is, I think, one or two students behind that bubble year. It's overflowing. And then it just made me think about, like, the math program is actually terrible. There's not been a single person happy with Go Math. I think we actually acquired it as many other school districts nearby were letting go of it. So to buy it, like, is the worst idea I've ever heard. I'd like for that to not be considered. I like the idea of trying to save the town money, but I also think that practices change, so we wouldn't want to then not move on to more cutting-edge math curriculums because we own this one and we need to make do. It also puts teachers in a really rough spot because, again, they'd be getting no training, all those workbooks are gone, there's no supports coming in from Go Math. So you take a teacher who has very little supports and huge classrooms, tiny classrooms, and then you're asking them to fill in all the blanks for a math curriculum that's terrible. My daughter is in a test, like, in the pilot group for illustrative. She's with an excellent teacher, Sue Brush, and it's been amazing to see what that math program, she's only had it for a few months, and then they switch to a different program. I don't know what they'll choose, but so far, I've been happier with my kid learning two different math programs in one year than Go Math, because it's that terrible. So, thank you. This is my call to support the Board of Ed budget and to support High Crest and all the schools in Weathersfield and all of our teachers who work so hard. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I missed the last meeting, because I think I was here early, but I left, and I didn't speak. But anyway, there was some issues that I watched on the television regarding that meeting, and I'm kind of like, I just don't understand some of these people, that they feel that there's no voice or impact from the people, there's no voice for those that were impacted by the Keisha Farm decisions or as we're moving along with what's going to happen there, and that there's a lot of people, fifty-two hundred people, that voted against the Keisha Farm purchase. They wanted no part of it. And here we have people up here pushing and pushing for what they want, yet those fifty-some hundred people aren't even heard, Mayor. And the decision for the Keisha Farm will end up being whatever, but I don't think you're going to do well with the next election coming up, because I think there's more of people who want nothing to be done on there or very little to be done on there than what's being proposed. Artificial fields that are being suggested to be put on there, I think are so wrong. I think it's going to plug up our highways, up Highland Street, Collier Road. I really think that the best source for that property would be make it so it's revenue-driven, such as fifty-five-and-over homes. And I think that, you know, you came out with a statement some time ago, three people on this council came out with a statement that said that the property cannot legally be sold or subdivided for private development purposes per bond counsel. And I know you're keeping that bond counsel decision so close to your vest, yet someday it's going to come out. And I really think you should square away with the folks of Weathersfield what that decision is. That decision was made at the prior council. You, Mayor, you were part of that. Mr. Lesser was part of that. Mr. Forrest was part of that. And you're still here, yet you won't talk about it. And I think that's pretty poor on the part of a public official. The public officials should come out and tell us why and how, and let us read that decision. By not doing that, you put such a cloud over that whole operation up there at Keisha Farm. And you will be, you shouldn't run anymore for public office if you can't tell us why we cannot put a development in that property, a fifty-five-and-over development that would give us approximately and more of a million dollars a year once it's built out in property taxes and help the rest of the town benefit from it. Now, you don't want to talk about it? Fine, I'll keep talking about it right up to the election, and I hope I can knock some of you out. Because, let's face it, fifty-two hundred people voted no for the property. Since then, a number of people have realized what a con job was done by that town council at that time, and we also know who the characters are that we have up here today. And, you know, we have more characters. We have, you know, we have a Mary Breton who keeps coming up here wanting to do something with the property, and she was one of those characters who kept it so quiet. Yet she speaks from this podium about the voices for those who are impacted. What she's really saying is the voices of those people who live nearby, they don't want to see whatever happened there, they want to see what they want. They're all interested in only their own items that they want. And she talks about that there's even a lack of this, a lack of, oh, boy...
Mr. Young?
Yeah.
On that? You're five minutes off.
Democracy. There's a lack of democracy she talks about. But when she sat up on this council, she exercised the same lack of democracy.
Thank you. To defend his record.
Hello, Tim Gatheres, 16th State Street. My understanding is that there was a $300,000 grant for, that the council can spend money somewhere, and I'm in support of spending it on the pickleball courts. That said, I'm a dinker, and after, I wasn't even going to speak on behalf of the Board of Ed, but coming here and listening, I think not only, and Mary brought up the point that, well, if we have these services, maybe more people will come to the town, younger families move in, and I think supporting the education for all our kids would bring families to town to, you know, if we have a strong school system, more younger families are going to look at the town and say, wow, I want to live here, even though there's probably not a lot of houses for sale right now. But I know our educators were fantastic. We lost one this year because she retired, but they're dedicated, and I hope that you approve the budget for the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move on to council reports. Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, I attended the Veterans Commission meeting on March 8th, and to be brief, there was a lot of discussion about, and the council should know this date and if they can make it, fellow counselors. Next Monday, March 27th, there will be a ceremony for Weathersfield Vietnam Veterans that the Lieutenant Governor is hosting, and I think, I don't know the numbers exactly, about three hundred fifty to four hundred Vietnam veterans were reached out to, Weathersfield Vietnam Veterans, and there was a fair number who responded, I think forty to fifty. So hopefully, there'll be a good crowd, and they will be given some accommodation by the Lieutenant Governor. The other two things we talked about was some of the goals for the year, and I talked about that last time, youth involvement, another Veterans Seminar on Benefits. And then there was a lot of discussion, and the mayor can provide more information than me, but discussion about the Memorial Day Parade, and they settled on a theme, "Our Greatest Generation," and there'll be some speakers whose family members served in World War II, a couple of speakers, and the theme again is "Our Greatest Generation." And we had a lot of discussion about the Memorial Day Parade coming up in a couple months. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any else? Mr. Daphne, Mayor?
Thank you. At the last Planning and Zoning Hearing, they began a public hearing, 213523Z, Town of Weathersfield Seeking a Zoning Text Amendment to Section 5.13 of the Weathersfield Zoning Regulations for Adult-Use Cannabis Establishments. This is a continuation from the last meeting. They will be meeting in this chamber at seven o'clock tomorrow evening. Everyone's welcome to come out and speak their mind on whether they want to see cannabis sold for recreational use in the Town of Weathersfield. As an aside, I just want to say that in January of 2022, the town, Assistant Town Planner, met with the town council and requested some guidance on how to proceed regarding cannabis facilities in the Town of Weathersfield. At the following meeting on February 22nd, the Weathersfield Town Council continued a marijuana business discussion and approved a motion to advise the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission of the town council's decision to allow for the cultivation of marijuana business establishments but not allow retail for some reason... For some reason, the planning zoning has decided to go a different route, and they're proposing a text amendment language that will allow for retail sales of cannabis. So again, if you want to comment, 7:00 tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Councilman Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, Human Rights Commission met, and they're planning on a welcoming week in September. Still putting some of the plans together, and we'll give you more information as that sort of becomes available. Some of the ideas tossed around will be sort of a welcoming dinner where everyone get together, multiple cultures, could be different kinds of foods. Sounds good, that's one of the ideas. Other ideas is to hop on to other community events that we have in town, Porch Fest, Holidays on Main, create a little bit more multicultural, more welcoming, those kinds of ideas. I'll get back to you as things get solidified. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Nothing?
Just one council report from the Housing Authority. To Deputy Mayor's point, I think he brought it up at the tour of the Housing Authority complex and discussion of the properties. Number of years ago, a number of trees had been cut down on properties owned and operated by the Housing Authority, and we had asked them to look into stump grinding those to make it a little bit more appealing. I think there's a total of about four separate properties that they had looked at, and I wanted to say the number was around $14,000 to stump grind those. So I think going back to the Housing Authority and saying, you know, the priority properties where they are, maybe we can get that $14,000 down to a more manageable number for them to be able to tackle the ones that are most dire and need to be removed for the aesthetic appeal.
It's many more than four.
Like sections of properties?
It's one of their developments, one site, if you will, Lancaster area, Rimfield Road, that area. It's probably about 28 stumps.
Oh, yeah. But I think they were talking about different areas throughout, so I guess that one may be the priority one. Okay. And report that back. And then also some unfortunate news. Kate has decided to, Kate Forrest here has decided to retire. I think many of us had known that. They are looking and going out to talk to potential applicants for new Housing Authority Executive Director. Kate is going to be staying on until the end of the year, but, you know, the struggles this town went through for hiring of certain positions, we were hopeful that this wouldn't be one of those where we could be able to get Kate's replacement in pretty soon. So, right now, there's a couple of new applicants that have come in, but they are weighing options right now to see who would be the best fit for that. Okay, now, on to council reports, or no, comments, council comments. Comments? Just a little bit of good news. I think it's this Thursday night, the Volunteer Fire Department is hosting a beer and wine tasting, first time since before COVID, if I'm not mistaken, from 7:00 to 9:00 at the community center. It's a great opportunity not only to fundraise for our volunteer fire department, but also to sample some of the beverages that our local package stores have available, and then not only to taste but to purchase afterwards. So again, proceeds go to the volunteer fire department. That's it. Now on to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. First off, the solar project agreement that was discussed at the last meeting, at the last meeting, the council instructed our new energy consultant, NV5, to review that proposal. They did, and it did come back with a positive recommendation. The Financial Resilience Committee met and discussed that with NV5, and all agreed to move forward with that. So that agreement was executed in time to meet the deadline. Next, I was joined by the mayor and our assessor, Walter Topliff, to provide testimony at the Planning and Development Committee at the Legislature this, last week, for a bill that would postpone the town's revaluation process for one year. That's due to the fact that, as the mayor just alluded to, some positions have been very difficult to fill here at the town, and one of those was the assessor position. It took us about eight or nine months to get that position filled, which put us behind the eight ball in getting that revaluation, RFP, completed in the proper way. So we provided testimony along with Representative Morin Bello. I think it's very positive that they'll likely provide that extension. That does not allow us to extend. The next time, we'll still have to do the next one in four years as opposed to five. And in the meantime, we have issued the RFP, and it is out right now, so that would be for revow, which would take effect October 24. The budget process, we are, as Superintendent Emmett stated, they provided their budget to you all this evening. I'm required to provide my budget to you by April 3rd. That will be delivered to you on that date. And then the presentation will be on the night of the public hearing on April 17th, per the process has been done here in the past. We've already scheduled a number of workshops immediately following that date that you all should have the dates for. So those will come pretty fast and furious over those next few weeks after the budget public hearing. So we look forward to working through that process. And then finally, the ARPA work session that we had discussed before is scheduled for next Thursday, the 29th, at 5:30 here in the chambers. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sue?
The office right now is coming into the home stretch for the Granica system. They're working on the formatting for the agenda template, and all the boards and commissions, all the information that we have for that has been loaded into the system. It seems like it's going to make things much easier. We've been able to go in and just take a look at it and see how it's going to work. And we have, it just seems like it will be much better and keep things efficient for us.
Okay. Great. We have a bid, I think, for you tonight as well, to hopefully make it a lot more smoother operations for you at Town Clerk's Office. Great, thank you. On to council action, item B1, bids. This is the Police Department generator, and I believe everybody is familiar. I don't know if Councilwoman Clancy is familiar. This had come up to our attention probably about a little over a year ago, and then had been discussed, put on hold to get some more answers, questions answered by not only the chief but by Sally and her staff. And Sally's before us tonight to talk about not only the one that we have currently in place, but the potential to purchase a new one.
Thank you. Sally Katz, Director of Physical Services. I am here to discuss requesting funding to replace the generator at the Police Department, which is a 2002-year generator. This generator supports the PD building, which not only supports the Police Department services, but also, most importantly, dispatch, which does provide services for fire, ambulance, and the PD. When I was up here prior to tonight, I had been up here to request funds to hire an engineer to take a look at the current generator, based on the recommendation of a previous electrician who had come to me and had said that he really recommended that it be replaced, based on the service record and his lack of confidence in the reliability of the unit. You did allow us to, the funding, to go out and seek an engineer to give us their opinion and also drawings for a new generator. In the interim, we hired a new town electrician who also made a recommendation to replace that generator. The engineers had come back with the recommendation to replace the generator and also had provided us design drawings for what a new generator should be. We went through a buying consortium that we belong to, and the $91,949 price you see in front of you is from Source World, which is the buying consortium. This is an essential item for giving backup in case of an emergency or a power outage. We have a smaller generator that is a redundant system to this generator if it goes down. It, however, does not have the capacity to run the systems for any great length of time. And so, based on the recommendations from the electricians and the engineer, we are requesting to have funding to replace the unit.
Thank you, Sally. Any questions for Sally? Seeing none. Councilman Forrest?
Sally, I suppose the request is, the request is for funding to obviously replace this unit. Your concern is probably not exactly where the funding comes from. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
It's the, it's the cause. And to the Town Manager, is currently on the table is to take this out of an ARPA account?
That's correct.
All right. And would we consider this replacement as sort of like an emergency nature, or it's something that has to be done relatively soon?
It could be considered that way, yes. But this was an item that was on the CNEF list a year ago, and it was designated for ARPA funding at that time, so that's why we carried it forward as such. Now, it's been another year.
Yeah.
And it's needed even more, in my opinion, but council could certainly consider it that way.
Okay. Just some thoughts from the council. I'm actually convinced that, at this point, I think that it's appropriate to replace it. I think this is our normal replacement of goods, and it should be part of our operating budget. We are now through, in my opinion, the major part, if not all, of the holiday, the snow season. I don't think we've used any out of our contingency. If this is in fact an emergency and something that we need, I think it would be more appropriate to fund this out of contingency rather than ARPA. This is using ARPA as a plug for our town's regular replacement needs, I don't think is appropriate. I think I've been consistent about that. And I'm happy to support this funding out of our contingency, which we have plenty of. We only have three or four months left in the year. It would be more appropriate than ARPA. So I would support us to use funds from contingency or some other location than ARPA, which has a lot of ability for a lot of other projects that we want to use. So keeping that, those funds in a good place while we decide how to, you know, work them out, I think would be much better for the town, and I think we'd be inappropriately using a shell game of ARPA to cover our operating expenses.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Just a couple of items. First, I want to say I fully support the purchase of the generator, so we're beyond that, all of my litany of questions and putting everybody through the wringer. I apologize for that. I do have a couple of concerns that I want to talk about as they relate to what we're buying. One of them has to do with the report by RZ Design Associates, and they have, item seven on the last, second page, they talk about discrepancies, and I don't see anywhere in the bid that they're addressing any of this. As a matter of fact, they say they're going to connect this unit to the existing wiring. I had an opportunity to speak with the town building official and showed him this report, and he was in agreement that a portion of it was not properly, not currently properly protected. I believe that's the second item on the list B. The other portion that's mentioned in the report is the ability to connect our portable generator to the existing generator. And if you recall, they talked about a box that has to be left open with 800 amps of current contained therein, and it's out in the elements, and that's not a proper way to connect something of that kind of power so that no one gets injured. And like I say, in the bid, it just says that they're going to connect it to existing wiring. So I'm not sure that there's money in the quoted price for doing that. And the last item I want to talk about is the documentation that, we had a discussion, and I can't even remember when it was, probably some six months ago or whatever, but one of the problems with the current system, current generator, is that it's made up from multiple vendors, as you described. The engine was manufactured by one company, the generator another, different components from different sources, and what Cummings said they're going to provide is an owner's manual. And I don't believe Cummings manufactures the generator itself. I believe they're a diesel engine manufacturer. I think they packaged this from several different companies, put it together. They talk, they describe about the control system being in Onin, which Onin manufactures generators. So I wanted to somehow go back to the vendor and say, we need all the technical data on this machine. We need the wiring diagrams. We need parts books, not just for the package itself, but what happens in year five when the generator needs a part, and we don't even know what part to order or who to get it from, and all these different issues that have come to haunt us with the current unit. So, you know, my review of this whole thing, they say that generator should last between 25 and 40 years, not to 20 years. Maybe ours is an exception. Maybe we got a lemon or a poor product, but we need to get all this information at the time of purchase because when it breaks down the road, we have no, very little chance of getting the data. So I don't know how we can approve this bid without getting that information on those items. So I would be glad to approve the bid, but based on, you know, what if they come back and say, well, if you want the manuals, we'll sell them to you at, you know, $2,000 or whatever? So I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, how we could handle that situation.
I'd be fine with you making it a condition of the approval to say that we will reach out to the, as part of the purchase, that we will require that the vendor provide all necessary documentation, including the wiring diagrams and all manuals as part of the purchase, and that the building official approve any wiring connections proposed by this vendor. Now, they're going to do the full installation, so they would have to get the building official's approval anyway, so that's kind of redundant, but I think stipulating that, that he would have to approve what's being proposed as part of this process, I wouldn't have an issue with that. I think that should solve it.
I'm concerned that they're going to install the unit, hook it up to the existing wire, wiring, and then our building official or one of the inspectors is going to go out there and say, no, you have to replace a control panel that's inside the police station. And they're going to throw up their hands and say, that's not in our bid. We said we were just going to work outside and hook it up to your wires. So now we're going to be, okay, now we need another 20 grand or 30 grand or whatever it may cost.
Our town electrician is also a part of this, along with the building officials. Our town electrician will be part of the installation. We also, with this, does come with, obviously, the warranties and the backup, absolutely. I am a firm believer in getting the, all manuals, just like in a project, getting as-built drawings and getting all of the supporting information that we need in order to maintain the equipment. But also to have our town electrician and any other support staff that he needs there when the installation is occurring so that they can work in tandem with the companies to make sure that it is being done to code safely and they have the ability to ask questions as the product is being installed so that they can properly maintain it in the future.
Actually, if I'm looking at this correctly, on page 310 of the Cummings Sales and Service, complete installation includes reconnect to existing wire and modify as necessary. I don't know where beyond modify as necessary, does that? So I don't know where beyond modify as necessary, does that include if it needs a new panel to tie into?
Because of that language, and I would refer to the town manager, because of that wide language, we would most likely be able to go back and say, this is the proposal that you gave us. This is the product that you're telling us that we are purchasing in full installation that has been tested, warranted. You have to pull the permits. We don't pull the permits, they pull the permits. They have to satisfy the needs of the building officials, and so the owners would be back on them.
Did, did Cummings see the RZ report? Or who, the company that bid it? Did they see this RZ?
We did, we did give that documentation, along with the design drawings that RZ did.
Okay. I'd like to add language to that. In addition to the manuals and parts books, technical data, all that, I'd like to have some language in there that says they're going to provide a safe means of connecting our, our emergency, emergency generator, the backup to the backup, and that everything that's required to make it within code is complied with at the price quoted. I'm just fearful that, if I was doing the job, I'd say, hey, no, I, I'm not going inside the building and doing anything. The, one of the items that I didn't mention with the wiring size, the engineer cited that the, the wiring was only rated at 1,140 amps and its, the system's rated at 1,200 amps. Steve Ladrula explained that to me, that the code allows you to go up to the next size, next standard-sized breaker, so you would not have to replace all the wiring. That would be an expensive proposition, running all those conductors out into the parking lot, so. That one was not an issue, but I just want to, in light of, you know, conversations that we've had in the past, if it doesn't get into the motion, then we're not obligated to follow through, so.
Councilman Pentola?
Yeah, my, my question won't be as, you know, I don't have the industry knowledge that Tom does, but.
Type it into that AI?
I, I was going to, actually, as we were talking. No, the one, the one concern that I had about the bid, and just in general, is this seems to be an emergency situation, and I think Matt pointed it out, and the, in the, in the bid, it said the lead time was 44 weeks for a shipping lead time. Was time, as far as fulfillment of the bid, considered if this is an emergency situation?
That is, right now, that is the lead time for sourcing. And with all due respect, we had requested this product quite a while ago. And with each passing day, that information was made available, that this is a long lead item, and that we are looking at 40 to 50 weeks in order for it to be delivered.
Okay.
Couldn't blame that on me for asking a lot of questions.
I will.
Just a couple questions on what Cummings has in their contract. It does say that they are going to remove existing old fuel in the tank. We are keeping the existing tank, I suspect.
I think it's part of the unit.
It's part of the unit.
Part of the unit.
Oh, okay.
They have to, they have to deal with that whole unit as one and remove it.
Okay. Just to, you know, I was wondering about the fuel. We would recapture that fuel. And then, secondly, we're not, we don't have to worry about an old tank that has sludge, rust, debris, anything like that in there?
We would also prep that for, it's when we retire, to make sure that we are not having it at full capacity. We would make sure to be running it and to provide it with the least amount of fuel available at the time that it is disconnected.
Mm-hmm. Okay. To go somewhat along, because we are going to take this generator and have it at our town garage for potential further use at some point, either here in town or surplus it, do we know the future of it?
In speaking with the town electrician just today about that, he was, and he wasn't sure if he made it clear, when he went around with some of the companies to look at the generator, they said, what are you going to do with the generator? And he was like, you know, at this point, we don't have, we don't have a plan for it because of its reliability and its age. And so that seemed to have been taken and run with it of, you know, we're going to repurpose it, we're going to be doing all of these other things with it. Because of its reliability, because of its age, because of the fact that we cannot support the engine if anything was to go wrong with it, the recommendation is that we, we dispose of it, pretty much, that we don't try to keep this thing limping along, but we could also, you know, if, if we could potentially reuse it somewhere, but it's a 20 some odd year-old piece of machinery that has issues. And so how much money do we want to continue to put into something to support it? Knowing that it is a generator that was supposed to be a permanent installation in a place and not a portable generator like we have as the redundant system.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a plug-and-play.
My point is, could we put it on a bid list, or not a bid list, but surplus item?
Yeah. I mean, if that is something that we want to look at, we certainly can do that.
Yep. Sign on.
There's one out there right now with 37 hours on it, manufactured the same time as, as ours, so. People still buy them.
Can bring them up to the Arctic and use them.
Maybe.
So, obviously, you would work to make sure that any waivers and we're not liable for anything on that. So, to Councilman Forrest's point of it being a mild winter, and maybe you can attest to our diesel fuel cost for trucks is down because of, you know, salt and sand requirements have not been, and plowing requirements have not been, same as in years past. Salt is well stocked in the salt shed?
Yes, and protected. Certainly, our salt consumption is way down. I can't specifically say about fuel, other than, you know, we, we were doing many, many other activities when we were not plowing snow and in around town, so our fleet was still being used, not in the 24-hour continuous periods that we do with a snowstorm. But certainly, we were able to save on, on salt product this year.
Well, Councilman Forrest brings up a good point. Contingency fund. I know we had a conversation about three months ago on contingency, and I can't remember what it was for, but the concern at the time was if we use contingency for one-time purchase for what it was, that it could affect our.
Bond.
Bond rating, exactly?
It was a dump truck. It was the dump truck.
Oh, okay. The use of this as an emergency, I mean, I think we could be able to work with bond council or, you know, defend the need for this with, you know, the past documentation over the last couple months, couple year, or a year or so, that we would be in dire straits if we did not have this. So contingency could be an option, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think based upon the documentation that we have supporting the need for this, and the fact that this is a, I would say, the most critical building that we have that must remain 24/7 operational at all times, that would be much easier to justify this than, than the previous request, yes.
Okay. Any concerns with folks up here from changing the budget source from ARPA to contingency?
It seems like we've used ARPA funds for a lot of things that could have been in our normal operating budget. And I don't know that we need to change the rules now, but I don't have a problem with it. It's either or. I mean, what, what makes something qualified as being able to use it for ARPA? You, you talk about software that the town manager wanted for running our council meetings more efficiently. That certainly could have been paid out of a budget. I mean, any, pretty much anything that we use the ARPA money for could have been used, you know, put in a budget. So is it like, it's okay if we use it for pickleball courts, but not?
And we're not using.
A piece of equipment.
And we're, not to confuse the matter, but we are not suggesting ARPA money for pickleball courts.
No, but it might be another field. We've talked about that, so I don't, I don't see the differentiation between what ARPA was supposed to be used for and what we're using it for. It's like, I don't have a problem either way, just kind of.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. To the town manager, I know we have a workshop, so I'd like to move this tonight and feel, and in support of it, but in terms of the funding source, I know we have an ARPA workshop on the 29th, where I think hopefully we'll make some progress, understand what we have left and, and set some goals. But is it, I guess I'll ask you directly, is it your recommendation that we use ARPA, or are you think we are better served to use the contingency fund in your professional opinion?
Again, I recommended ARPA because that was the original source of the request, and that's the way, the entire CNEF list before I got here was placed for consideration under ARPA funding. And just for clarification on that, it's, it's revenue replacement funds from ARPA that we're using, so there, there is no criteria or requirement. It becomes general fund, funds in this, in this instance. So, so because of that, I recommended the ARPA because I felt that that's how it was originally proposed, and I think it's an appropriate use of those funds. To Councilman Forrest's point, you know, this is one of those situations where we're at a point now where we really need to get this replaced. I will tell you, I have a genuine concern that if we don't do this as soon as possible, that we stand a very real risk of having an event, and I've mentioned this to some of you, if we have a disaster-level event that affects multiple jurisdictions at the same time, and our generator goes down and our backup is not sufficient to cover that building, we're not going to get help from the state anytime soon. We're, we're behind a long list of other localities that are probably going to be before us, and so anything we can do to prevent that eventuality from happening, that's my main concern here. So it's really, I think, discretionary for the council to decide if you'd rather do it out of contingency. I think, again, we can defend this one under contingency because we have the documentation to support it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. I got it in front of me. I'll make a motion to approve the bid to purchase a new Cummings model, number 230DSHAD, 230-kilowatt diesel generator, utilizing the Sourcewell, number 120617-CCM contract agreement, and to allocate $91,949 of the town's contingency, contingency funds for this purchase.
Second.
Further discussion?
I was just going to say, do we want to put in some of the protections?
Oh, yeah.
That Deputy Mayor talked about. I thought those were reasonable, although I don't necessarily have, wasn't really writing down the wording to.
The town manager was.
What if the town manager was, I'd be happy to receive a friendly amendment, as they say, at the State House, to effectuate that.
Basically stated that we will request that the vendor provide all documentation at the time of purchase to include parts books, wiring diagrams, and manuals, and that the building official must approve all interconnections for the safe connection of the secondary generator.
Now, we've got to get that into a motion.
Just add it to that motion.
Like as a condition of?
Yeah.
I would say require rather than request.
Okay. Require, that's fine.
Require.
I'm okay with that.
Require prior to the execution of? We've got to get that right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Forrest?
I'd like to move to amend the motion to add.
Fred, just give me your book.
Yeah. To add, the execution of said agreement be conditioned on the requirements of the town manager, as stated herein. I'm trying, okay. That's not part of the motion. Does that work for you?
That's your amended motion to the motion.
Yep.
I'll second that. Everybody okay with that? We all have it?
So.
Sue's taking copious notes, so.
We've got the recording. We'll get it all down.
Yep. Okay. Amended motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Actually, that was the amendment, Mike.
Oh.
You have to do the.
Yeah, that was the amendment. Okay. Now, the amendment is now before us.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the motion, amended motion is before us. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work on this. Sally?
Fred, next time, just slide down your notebook. That'll be a lot easier.
Oh, we got to do it pretty quickly.
Okay. The consent agenda is before us. I don't believe there's any. Did not see any appointments.
Sue's saying no.
Nope. Sue's historic document preservation grant is on here, and our minutes of last, two weeks ago, meeting on March 6th is included. I think everybody has had time to review those.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Any abstentions? Ayes have it, motion carries. Ordinance resolutions tonight, before us, none. Unfinished business, citizens' recognition guidelines. I don't know if Councilman Lesser wants to finish his conversation on this that began a while back on this and has gone through some iterations of different forms.
Sure, Mayor.
Sure.
So thank you to Counselor O'Connor, who provided some very good original recommendations a few months back, and Counselor Carbone, the town manager myself, met a couple weeks ago to further refine some of the recommendations, and particularly the language, and I think there may be some even further adjustments to the language, but hopefully we can move the adoption of the committee and we can start the good work of tonight, to move it tonight, and start the good work of putting the committee together and start recognizing residents who are doing or have done outstanding things. So, Mayor, I think you had some language, I don't want to call them amendments, but changes before, that I thought were good ones.
Yes, I was looking at the redlined version, and I'm trying to just match it up. I know you had said to go through this version. Under key to the town honor, under nominations, so, page is this, on the second page of it, second paragraph, nominations for this ward submitted.
The date?
Yeah. September 1.
You had an issue with the counselor?
Republican counselor.
Yeah.
Democratic counselor, one citizen member from each representative party for a term not to exceed two years. And individuals, actually, in the parentheses, that will consist of four individuals. You can put a comma after individuals and take delete being, that will consist of four individuals, comma, one Republican counselor, one Democratic counselor, one citizen. And there was a date change. Oh, just to be consistent, we had September 1 instead of November 1, November 1, take out the ST. Decision will be made by January 1. That's this one in the process. Item 2, the process, it would be...
I think all those are taken out.
To by the, oh, okay. Third bullet, council members, let's see, the second bullet, council members may refer citizens to and delete by the town mayor, manager's office to begin a letter process. And then there was just a possessive, going back to the key to the town honor, nominations for this award are to be submitted to and accepted by the town manager's apostrophe S. office, and maybe capitalized, town managers.
You seem like an English major, Mayor. Good catches. I think you were a history major, but...
I was, history ed major, so...
Your English changes are good.
And then I would just also defer to the town manager to make any other conforming changes or anything else we may have missed.
If I may, I move adoption of citizen recognition, recognition committee guidelines as recommended changes today.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
We do not have any new business for tonight. No ordinances or resolutions. And the second portion of public comment section. Anybody for the second comment section? Seeing none, we will move that item and we will go, make a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Ayes have it, we're...